Okay. All right, so. Welcome, Eastline Board of Education meeting for November eighth, two thousand and twenty one. Called the meeting door six o'clock and immediately went executive session for the purpose of discussion of contract negotiations. We are out of executive session now and we'll carry on with our agenda. Will everyone rise and join me in the. I pledge allegiance to the.
The United States of America, into a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, good, liberty, and justice for all.
Board would be glad to hear any comments from the public concerning the district. Would you like to address this time? Would you like to address the board? Yes. Pardon?
Green light means.
Yep.
For the record, my name is Elizabeth Mandela, live at twelve Black Oak Drive. So my topics tonight are critical race theory, items on the school website, freedom of information requests. Good evening to the Board of Ed. I was looking on the high school website under the professional resources for Eastline teachers. This resource was provided by SCORE that I found formerly Eastline BLM. And it clearly states critical race theory and its related terms systemic racism, intersectionality. And it refers teachers to writings by Simbrough and Trenshaw who developed critical race theory and who also developed intersectionality. It also refers teachers to works by Batina Love with very radical, so radical that the Biden administration had to distance themselves from her. And I'm bringing this up here at a public forum because it was also in a public letter in which Superintendent Newton said that claims of critical race theory in the school were only rumors. That was from August twenty. So I understand that as a board you are not responsible for each item in the school specifically. However, as a point of leadership, I hope you do a better job making clear that Eastline does not teach critical race theory or its derivatives. So I have made several freedom of information requests concerning the Equity Institute and the Equity audit. Even though it was paid for by public funds, was held in a public school in which teachers for which I as a taxpayer pay for, I was told that the Equity Institute would not release the teacher training. Or when I went to find the data on the Equity audit, instead of just the quotes that were given, which were very vague. And because my quote was not included, I know it was not comprehensive. I was also told that this information is private. I do not understand. They came into our schools, they spoke to my children, my child. They asked questions, why can't I see the results? I paid for that as a taxpayer. I am not happy with that and I will be addressing that further in future. I also have another freedom of information request. Request for all communications that this board and the administrations had with the Equity Institute. This hopefully includes the contract, the school system has made of the Equity Institute for the town audit and the September teacher training. If a board member has not had communication to the Equity Institute, I would like that to be stated by them. I would also like the list of people who are on the waitlist to be on the district Equity Committee. Please include the committee regulations and length of service allowed and the policy for changing, adding, and removing members. I am on that waitlist per my request during a conversation with Superintendent Newton earlier this year.
Thanks, Beth. Because if you can hear me, then I'll take that and happy to talk at any point. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Okay. Thank you. We have our minutes from the October eighteenth regularly scheduled meeting. Like to make a motion on those minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to put the minutes of our regularly scheduled October eighteenth meeting.
I'll second.
Any corrections, modifications, comments on those minutes? Seeing none. All those motions signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining?
Stand.
Stand if they were. Make that. Okay, so that brings us to special reports. And I see we have a selectman representative here. Sharon, I was here. Hi, Mark.
How you doing, Tim? Ready to give us a report? I don't have too much of a report.
Okay.
Just congratulate everyone that's been reelected and some of the new members that will be joining him. This will probably be my last one, so I've really enjoyed working with you guys over the last seven years, especially for the school building project. Thank you for your service, thank you for your service for your many years. A few other members here that are running, so. Thank you, that's all I have, a lot of, a lot of the new issues, there's going to be passive new board selection. Which will obviously be seated on December sixth.
Mark, yeah, Mark, I would like to thank you and recognize all the contributions you made from the elementary school project from through all of the different stages and then actually actually sitting in on the building committee meetings as well. You're a big asset and really helped us get, get that all the whole way. So thanks, thanks so much. And there were many other, many, many other people too that were. Yeah, but, but you did, did really help.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, let's see, we have some Eastline middle school representatives. Are they out on Zoom? So. Jackie, do we have some our middle school?
Yep, they're both on Dylan Manifold and Nicholas Camby, they both are on Zoom.
Hello, um, I'm Dylan Manifold. So first we wanted to talk about the cross, the clubs. So first we have the cross-country club, which is the largest club and has a bit less than one hundred students. And then there are also a lot of popular clubs like the Minecraft club, the Lego robotics club, Yerba Club and Homework Club, which students are all very interested in. We also have a basketball team this year, which we haven't had in a few years. We surveyed and all thought it would be a good idea. So we brought that back this year.
Um, another sports team we have is a soccer team. It's actually the first year soccer we have. There's about twenty students and it started as a pilot program to gauge interest. And the big championship game, you could call it, is the students played the faculty. And I don't know how it ended, but it happened today. One of the fun things with the school is our field trips, they're back. And some of them are Project O, which was a fun trip, which where we learned about sea life and we went on a fun boat ride. There's a Yukon program for girls who want to like become more, to become scientists. And a parent from my keep of the big blue, um, has got a grant to allow us to go to Mystic Aquarium, which is very fun. And there's also a field trip to Fort Griswold, which sadly got postponed because of bad weather. And another good thing about this year are the buses, there are about twenty-five, thirty-five students per bus and about one, two students per bus.
That was you, Sachi and Dylan.
Oh, sorry, yeah, we have one more, one more middle school? No, I think we. From both, yeah.
Yeah, Dylan spoke first.
Any questions for middle school representatives?
No question, but thank you guys, great job.
Yeah. Very good. Excellent. Okay, so. Or Brendan and Sachi, I think are. By Zoom, correct?
Yes. Yes, I don't too, Brendan.
We are all training, so.
Oh, good.
Okay, all right. Sounds good.
So thanks, Sachi.
Sharon. So, um, this Thursday, we have obviously Veterans Day and we are bringing back our Veterans Assembly, which is really exciting. Um, with like an extended advisory period. And then homecoming happened on Monday outdoors, I think it turned out very well. Um, along with Spirit Week and yes, seniors did win. But. Um, it was, it was really good, the pep rally went really well. Um, it was all outdoors, the seniors even had to do their run out and I think everyone is really happy to get back into it and feel like it's back to normal and there's a lot of spirit. And then the fall cleanup fundraisers run by Senate, which is also starting this weekend. So everything's starting to reappear from not having last year, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a lot of sports news. So the first thing is that girls soccer have their second round of states game on Wednesday at home. And then the second thing is that field hockey state starts tomorrow. And then both girls soccer and volleyball and swim have won their PC titles. And then girls and boys cross-country had states, uh, all of them got third place, but the boys had the opportunity to go to state opens. And the last thing is at the end of the quarter was last Friday, November fifth.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Did Sachi? Did Sachi have anything more? Brendan's out there too.
I didn't see Brendan.
No, Brendan, Brendan is not here.
Okay. But now you're, you're rotating with Brendan. Okay. Got it.
Yes.
Three of you, we'll get it down. It'll just take us a couple of weeks. Questions for our high school representatives?
No, thank you.
I have a comment, it's not really a question, and I forwarded this information to both Annalise and Jeff. And the League of Women Voters is a bipartisan group and they are offering free membership to high school students. And the opportunities sound really good, I just wanted to make you guys aware of it. So in lieu of dues, they just ask that you would participate in at least two events per year. That would be voter registration, debate timing, letter writing, campaigns, that kind of thing. So if you just be interested in having that opportunity, I think it's just a great opportunity to get involved with things in the community and activities that people are doing. So this is something that the league president had said to me today, so I just want to take you aware of it.
Excellent. Anybody else? Okay, great, well, thank you very much. Okay, all right, so we'll move on then to our consent agenda. Is everybody okay with it's on the item that's on the consent agenda? Okay, anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, Kate moves it, second.
Second it.
And Jill seconds it. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes unanimously. And for those at home, it's the item that was on the consent agenda was a donation from the Eastline youth basketball program to the Eastline Girls Basketball Program, the amount of seven hundred dollars, so very generous donation. That brings us now to our discussion action items for the evening. And the first one up for discussion actions were proposed Eastline Teachers Association contract for that runs from July first, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five. Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I would just personally like to thank the teachers, you know, the members that were part of the negotiations process. We had a very amicable negotiation session. It went very smoothly and just proud to work in a district that we have such a good relationship with. And I want to thank the members from the board that were part of that process as well.
Comments from the board that were part of the negotiation? Or would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I would like to recommend by the Board of proposed Eastline Teachers Association contract for July one, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second. Candace seconds it, the motion, further discussion? All those favorite motions signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain? Passes unanimously. Next item up for discussion actions, proposed Eastline custodial and maintenance salary wage, including reopeners contracts for two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, so.
Yeah, basically due to COVID, we did a reopener or planned after one year, a reopener on wages and insurance with our custodians. We met with them and again, another amicable meeting and discussion and came to agreement on their wage increases for the next two years as well as insurance. So, you know, they're, they're not here to publicly thank, but another great, great group and in great working members of the Eastline Public Schools.
Good, excellent. Who was, who was on that? Myself, Bill, Candace, Lee. Okay, and I think that was. Very good, excellent. Okay. So with that, anybody want to make a motion concerning the contract?
I will recommend approval by the Board of Education. Eastline custodial and maintenance salary wage, including. And twenty-two, twenty-three.
And second, Candace seconds it. Any other discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor of most signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain, passes unanimously. We're set on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. How are we going to record what he has just abstained or?
No, he's, um, he's not here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm marking it as absent.
Okay, just curious.
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to our items under instruction and the first one up, which has been, we've been waiting for this one. Clear touch model, model demo. I jumped, just.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Shannon Savlio, who is our district line instructional coach. And you met Lindsay, met some of you met Lindsay Merrill earlier. One of our instructional coaches at the elementary school. So they're here tonight to show you what this clear touch can really do.
So we're excited to have her come in here as well. COVID disrupted a lot for us, we had, literally, I was at the base school at the time, for a little bit of a shift level. And we were given two choices of boards, we were working with the different departments to try and look at it through the lens of their disciplinary studies and sort of this was going to be a good fit for them. We were excited and that was like that week and then we're out. And so then we wanted to. And having teaching and we're now back, so we ended up with, you know, we're fortunate enough to be able to purchase these, which are many outdated old educators. So we're excited to get these into classes. But with that being said, it's very important to know where teachers are right now, especially with how many technology tools they had to master during pandemic teaching. And they did a phenomenal job trying to meet with these of their students. So we want to be very intentional with how we roll these out so that we're building excitement and capacity. And we're going to be using these to their fullest to kind of involve and activate that as more of a team. So to do that, we created a three-tier process for community learning. Next Friday, we'll begin that, that training together, that half base of the teachers. And at level one training, we just want teachers to get comfortable with the basics of the boards. We want teachers to be able to smoothly integrate the other instructional software that we have. That way it doesn't seem intimidating and overwhelming because they're already feeling that way right now. And then what we're going to plan on doing is going from basics to now where we do a little more advanced training. Tie the boards into how they can use in each of the areas. So for instance, how could these tools be used to engage with high leverage instructional practice of the math? What would this look like if I'm a social studies teacher and I'm trying to do a reconstruction on how to do a document-based question? How could I use this to model the practice before kids go out into their guided practice that they didn't use at home? I'm rebooting it, give it a fresh restart. I'm not tired, so anyway. So that's where we are right now, so the middle school and high school will be rolling these out this year. And I'm not sure you want the different models, we have like a secondary model, so that can help with coaching and planning. And also that transition, you know, for instructional practices at the middle school and that transition to high school or seems as a bigger picture rather than just here's your screen, come on. So Shannon and I have been working on, I said, a scaffolded approach to roll this out to the teachers. The first training theme is how are they going to use this with tools that they already have access to for ease of access, for their comfortability? A lot of them have been using other types of interactive whiteboards, that's a smart board, so you want to be able to show that they don't need to reinvent things that they've been utilizing for years. They can access all of their tools from this board to save you. So really, just to take you through what our trainings will look like with them. The board has a toolbar on each side of the screen. So this first thing is a, is a pen tool. So essentially they can annotate over the web with this. And then they can upload those notes to their OneDrive or their. So whichever they prefer, whichever they're utilizing, it's either back center or both. The pen tool, one of the things that we really love are that spotlight tool. So they can really clone in for those executive function things if you refer for the earlier presentation. We can really limit those distractions for students and spotlight on one particular thing. It's that time countdown, so again, that executive function component that visually for students. That watches, one thing I really love is Air Class. So I can really quickly shoot out an assessment or a question, exit ticket, staging my students, like where they're at with the lesson. They scan a QR code and it's, it's live interaction with the board. So it, it's just really neat that I can draw visual. And that has some, it does have different modules on it, I can change my inputs. It does come with Canvas, which is when we sat through our training, the preferred tool that the clear touch company uses. It's there, I'll open it just so you can get a quick view. One of the other things that we are super excited to show the teachers is Collage, which is this thing that you may have noticed all throughout the training so far. It records every ten minutes. So by inputting this code, students can share my screen. So this is their just general whiteboard tool, like the shared PowerPoint stuff with, if you want to. Yeah, you can have different screens, different models. So if I'm like, if I'm in the middle of a lesson and I clearly see the class needs, need to do word examples, and I'll say on that. Teacher and I'm trying to run through the steps, you know, I'm just sort of in like the middle. You can easily. When I'm trying to show you how clean and smooth it is and how visually it is. So the old models that we had with the old smart pens, these things were pretty dated. So I remember when I was a social studies teacher and I would actually try and use those smart pens on my board, it just wasn't worth my time. It was really not clear, it was really hard for other students to see what I was writing, writing. So it just didn't work, but now I can do that pretty quickly and we have the capacity then to like save these and export them, send them to. So if I had a kid absent that day and I just did a word example, or it would be helpful for that kid in class that day to see that again later on. You know, I can easily send that to and upload it to my Google Classroom. So, or if I'm in a class and Google Classroom has a stream feature, so that's the way I like, if I need to just send a message during like the class, I can send a quick little message. Then I can do that, I can put that right into the stream and be like, here it is, just in case you need to just see it again. And one thing we really loved is that it does have the option for recording as well. So I could record my entire lesson and then Shannon said, you know, one thing, well, which part about asynchronous programming? Because these things are invaluable tools, because I can record my entire lesson, teleport it to my Google Classroom and catch whatever students, if they were over serving services, they're absent for the day.
That's awesome.
I needed like an image quick, they have an image search. And I can do a quick image search and like bring up on my class. So let's say I was a social studies teacher, I typically would always have my political cartoons playing and then I wanted to like quickly get up that up there. And now I have a, I can use that spotlight feature and like have them really look at one portion of that political cartoon, which are really going again on the symbols on my desktop. These are the kind of ways that we're going to start modeling, I didn't answer a construction. You could also, you can also go to the web and, and just type in a quick URL if I was to annotate something like, I'll say, oh, you know, there's this article here, this, let me model, like I'm going to teach you research practices, let me model what I was going to do. I can do that right within this digital whiteboard. This is what it is, it's a, it's another digital whiteboard. And another thing we're going to love for the embedded baskets that come with the software. So just protectors and coolers and things that are really helpful to math teachers, their print paper, that was part of it. This hides the old screen shade, kind of like this too, so people need to re-center like attention and then like that, you know, again, then the kids are like shifting the focus. Another thing that's different with a model like this versus a, for Decker as well, is that this too could become a station. So after I'm done with direct instruction, after I've modeled and did my interactive piece of instructional practice. And then we're moving to guided practice where kids are in small groups or when they have problems, they got their graphic organizers, this could actually become a station as well. So, you know, if I'm doing a station rotation model or like there's three different activities going on at the same, you know, same time. You know, this can become now a place where a couple of kids come up and do a demo. And there's a software app on there, Snowflake, that's on, puts the screen. So you could also do something like that where there's an image or a resource on this side. And then on this side, the teacher could be modeling or the kids could be processing, they're thinking, there's a lot of different ways that this can be incorporated. They are multi-touch, Shannon said, so there's a hundred and twenty points of contact to the board, so if I get a multiple student collaborating up here at one time.
Oh, wow.
But I know, for me, like the base of clarity and then just like some of that flexibility, depending on, you know, depending on the learning configurations, you know, science lab, that was all, that was probably not the best place. But the other classrooms, it could, could work that way. So with a current configuration of the boards, a lot of teachers were like, like forced to set up their classroom in a very specific way because of the wiring. But now there's a little bit of flexibility there as well. Yes.
This is really cool, so I have a few questions. First though, is, is there a way, you mentioned with a QR code. Can the students with their laptops connect to the board and can, so can you, can they do stuff on their screen that then appear on the board and like?
So you would need a Chrome extension in order to read QR code from the computer. But through that collage code, they can just get kind of code, they would have the software downloaded on their computers, which is what we're working on, if we're out on the computer. And then they'll launch collage, they'll prompt that for a code. And then the second they put that code in, they're connected now to the board. We have to, they need to examine, so you can't just have. Like I'm zoom bombing, like I wonder that, right? They'll find a way. But that will just have to happen, like so we, we would do that as best practices and if you don't recognize the name here, you don't hit the proof. But it is great like for sharing out purposes for students, they would just connect right to the board and they, you know, they're.
And, and they could do something on their screen which would appear up there and would you, would it have their name to know who did that or?
I can see advantages and disadvantages of that.
So there's two things here, for with this board, yes, that you would see their name for it. Like to your point, I was very intentional with when and how I'm using that. But we have lots of instructional tools and the tools that we have selected have been very, very we've been thinking about that, about format and feedback, right? And like the data, so for instance, a nearpod, I have an ability, if I create my lesson with a nearpod instructional software, my kids can respond, take polls, write answers. But I have the ability to say no names, the only person that would know who the name was, would be me, the teacher. So then I know, okay, I really need to help that student out a little bit more, they're just not getting it. But I can be monitoring part of the feedback like, hey, I really liked this answer, or what would make it stronger? And you can start like trying to make it a safer environment for kids. So I think we do have a lot of tools that fit that capacity. So I think, I'm glad you brought that up, that like we are talking about our training with teachers, we got to say like, when would this be your time? And, you know, but we want to create safe spaces for students because once they feel safe, they're going to take on these challenges more. And I'm excited for the whole FCL, for your opinion, so we're doing well. It all fits, it really does, nothing is ever separate. We definitely depend less of that intentionality, I put that in mind of how can we influence them with this training to start putting that practice into their. We definitely depend less of that intentionality, I put that in mind of how can we influence them with this training to start putting that practice into their life.
We do want to be very intentional about not just saying, this is a lot for you, and we do not want teachers feeling overwhelmed right now, that is not what we want. So we're excited to kind of do this in that state of the past.
Yeah, sure, so, and I would say this a few times now, but as part of the scaffolded approach, the first training would really just be them learning how to use this side toolbar. On what, but they already have access to. The next step would be how do they create lessons from the ground up with this software? So that would be the second training, using that Canvas whiteboard that we just showed you. Third training would be this, this is not like what Shannon briefly mentioned before. We save this for the third, because this feels like the most cumbersome of everything that there's that comes to offer. They consider these nodes, so everything is customizable, but the cool thing is that you can customize the nodes. So things that we are already using, District Drive, like Classroom, Google, Google Classroom, Pizza Hut. All the things that we already have can just be like a node on the interface. So everything is essentially just one click away. We do need some accounts for this, which is another thing we are creating and pushing out. I don't like to just cycle through, like it would be Google's, apparently, and no one here. Kind of something for pretty much every department, really, I mean, there's some music things, there's some bubbles, there's math. And then again, Canvas is like an embedded tool in here as well, so there's always more than one way to hack this. So there is a lot of possibilities here, and we have other very powerful tools as well, and each of them serve unique purposes. So that's why you never want to just put all your eggs in one basket, because, you know, a lot of these might be great, you might look at the kids in front of you right now and say, oh. You know, so how do we make this really intentional? Because that's going back to the coaching session from before, intentional planning is really what we have to be, be about. So, so we're excited about the possibilities, that zones where you can split the screen forward zone and one. We are also here in the trainings for teachers based on the departments that we're seeing. So when we see math, we're going to focus on the math tools, we want it to be meaningful, develop the capacity for how today they thought we're going to be using these boards in their classroom.
Very. Just, did, could you make a comment, a reference to the SEL competencies? Can you just like quickly run through that, because I can see very well how this could be used for content? How would you use this to help students develop their SEL competencies?
When we're looking at the different competencies, that we're looking at risk taking, or looking at kids in feeling safe in an environment. We're thinking about students that are with self-regulation and trying to, you know, be, have a little more cognizant about that, meta cognitive strategies. The teacher can model using these, but I think I was talking more about creating that culture in the classroom, so when we're doing feedback cycles in the classroom. If kids do not feel safe, they're not going to want to be highlighted, they're not going to speak up, they're not going to advocate for themselves or ask for help. So I think that's where we're going to be trying to do is connect those dots.
And then I think about tools like this, the thing that benefits certain populations in your classroom, really benefits everybody. So when you talk about those visually, it's like a timer countdown, that benefits everybody. And I can very covertly put that up on my board. And while it's making one student or two students in a classroom feel way more confident, because that's a tool that's helpful for them, it's really benefiting everybody. And I'm not saying like anybody else is.
Two questions, so one is, is the plan that there'll be one of these in every classroom? And then kind of coupled with that is, do you see that K through 12, that this, there's kind of benefits at all, a lot that you can tailor and customize like for each level?
So right now it's middle school, are you cool? We're in the phase rollout.
Yeah, we have a phase rollout. Yeah, we don't have the funds to put it in every classroom right now, so, but right now, many of the older classes are starting this year with a cycle of math, English, both of these. And more language, science is on, a few years back, we have two going to music as well, so we aren't leaving out some of the secondary areas. And we'll feed that destruction, so there is a, I think a four or five year, I think we're on, that's on, I don't know, but like, so that's definitely about this. So yeah, there's a P time, I didn't get it. And then because the elementary, I already wanted ProWise. And when we demoed ProWise versus ClearTouch at the high school, the secondary teachers really seemed to gravitate a little bit more to the ClearTouch boards. We have to, you know, we have, we need them to be excited about using it and not just saying, here's, you're using this board. So we really felt that that teacher feedback was important.
To your point, yes, I mean, there's absolutely a market for this for elementary levels as well.
Excellent. Other comments, questions? John?
No, I just get old, because we were graduating, smart boards were the big thing. Now it's this.
Well, thanks, you know, and you better, I would do, it's a force mark.
Howard posted a picture of you.
So the ClearTouch, they're just, they, they have, since COVID happened, they have not had the hands on it. So we wanted to, we had to work with the government, we were working with the, you know, how to set off for them and all that and generally. Things to know also is that the ClearTouch boards will be rolling into classrooms, but their other technology will stay until it's fully implemented and they're comfortable. We don't want to, you know, take the rug out from underneath anybody's shoes and make sure that they're comfortable implementing it. But, you know, we would hope probably by, after the PD, PD day in March, when we get, we expect to finish some of that advanced training. That we would be ready to start backing out some of the, some teachers are going to be diving right in, but we also want to be cognizant of, you know, where people are and meeting them where they are and making sure they're comfortable.
Kate, did you have something?
I'm just wondering about adaptations, with people with either visual impairment or ADHD, I know if you have ADHD, that red might be too much for you, but.
In the new Canvas, there's a cover or like a color filter that you can select. And I'll be honest, this red that you see, most teachers never read it like this, like they typically have their classroom with their Google Slides up or something like that. So you typically don't see that red, but I agree, like sometimes red can be.
Well, in the contrast to people with visual difficulties or and then hearing as well, so I mean.
Yeah, so we would never, we would never throw, even use your color themes for instructional purposes. So, so we would make sure that, you know, that we, the other tools that we are using to deliver instruction happens. And we have tools on the one-to-one devices that can be personalized, so we have some very powerful extensions, we're trying to eliminate those barriers. So we have a couple of extensions that also have a student side, they can personalize and customize, and we push it out to everybody. So, you know, we don't have to just have a certain limitation to trying to provide some personal design. So, so we have those out there.
I think what we got about this is it comes with two modules, a hybrid and a PC. So essentially this, this is a computer unto itself, right? So right now, this is the Eastlime computer image that was pushed out onto this. This is the same background that they see on their, this is their.
I was just going to say that one of, a part of Shannon's role and responsibility is around adaptive technology. And it's, and so she's done a phenomenal job, she continues to do that. And I know that probably as we get to more advanced training, we'll, we'll talk about really what this can do and how it can service those who have special needs, that runs to access.
Yeah, we're really thinking for that, we're very excited that the teachers are ready for that, as well as really all embracing that, so it's going to be a big part of our structural model.
Thank you so much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Guys.
All right, so let's see, the next item that's up for discussion is the coaching model presentation, an update on math reading technology.
Yep, so I mean, I'll turn it over to Annalise, but we had during AAA, it was great, we had I think seven board members over here for part of AAA and part of the meeting discussion. Open up to a little bit of a further discussion on the coaching model, we have some of our staff members here from Lilly B, Annalise, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, so you, you have gotten a little bit of a preview, but I would like to start with introducing Joy Casey, who is a consultant from Diane Sweeting Student Center Coaching. She's here from Colorado for the next couple of days, yeah, so we've been hosting Joy, today was the first, she's here for tonight and tomorrow with our group. Today, we started the day off with a professional development session for about a couple of hours, where the, the coaches really go into the Student Center. Results-based coaching tool, so I think you saw a little preview of that at the AAA meeting, so they worked a little bit on that. And then Joy, actually, has been traveling, she's going to be traveling to all the buildings, meeting individually with the coaching teams to do coaching of the coaches. But Joy is a coach in her district in Colorado. She, she comes to us with a significant amount of experience that, you know, is a different level of experience than other types of consultants, because she's practicing it every day. So, you know, we have some post-COVID implications with our trying to roll this out, well, Joy is living that as well. And so she's really able to bring her experience to the table and probably solve collectively with the group. So Joy's going to talk a little bit about the Student Center Coaching in general. And then we're going to hand it over to our coaching team from, from Lilly B, who will talk more specifically about what this looks like at the building level. I'm just going to try to make this a better view for you. There we go. So Joy, you want to?
Well, thank you, yes, I too am a practicing coach, and I kind of pride myself on that. And like, like most districts, when they contact I, we need what Diane Sweeting, I don't blame them, she's wonderful. But I bring this other aspect to the table of like, I'm in it with you guys. And here's some of my thinking, and here's some of your thinking, and really truly be able to be partners in the work with these coaches and navigate waters that we haven't been in yet. So I did, I was trained by Diane and Leanna eight years ago. So I, I got into a coaching role and my boss and I had no idea what to do. So we contacted Diane and Leanna, I was able to work directly with them, which was great, because we're in the same area, so that worked out awesome. So everything that I know is from them. And it just, it makes my job really easy and really fun, when I come out here and I get to consult with other coaches, is sharing that story and sharing their background and sharing kind of how that got to where she is now. So she started out, when we think about comparing to other models, she was a coach at a K-8 or elementary school. And she was then a teacher there, went into the coaching role and teachers were dogging her in the hallway. The teachers were saying, leaving little notes in her mailbox, saying, thanks, I got it, like, you don't need to come back in. She would find herself hiding in the resource room, like with the lights out, because teachers were not welcoming her in the classroom, and she didn't understand why. And really, when it came down to it, she just had this aha one day of like, well, it's because everything that I'm focused on is what the teacher is or is not doing. Versus what are the kids, like where are the kids in this practice? And so her whole philosophy changed, where now we're going into the classroom and we're focused on the kids. And we're making instructional decisions in the moment based on the kids. So it's no longer a teacher-centered approach of you are doing this or you're not doing this. Like when you engage in this behavior, our kids are more engaged, our kids are performing better. So it was like a switch in thinking, right? Of, I'm no longer going to be this drive-by coach, sit in the back of your class, observe for 45 minutes. Have my little note card of stuff, maybe I leave it with you, maybe I don't, maybe meet in three days, maybe we don't. But it's like, no, I'm going to partner with them in the moment to make decisions that are best for kids. So, and you'll go to the next one. So this is a quote out of their new book, and our Lilly B friends talked a little bit about this too, is that everything we do is driven or based on student evidence. So we're constantly and consistently modeling collecting student evidence to then make, like I said, in-the-moment decisions based on that. So if we want to increase student achievement, then we need to be using data. That's at the center of everything we do. They shared that when we're co-planning, we're using data from that lesson before to then sort out where are our students now and plan where we want them to be. And so some examples or some principles that drive our work is that coaching isn't about fixing teachers, the very old school model, right? If you're struggling, you get a coach. Well, our Lilly B friend shared that like, everything you do.
I guess we have a question here. Just back to your last slide.
Yes.
Just, you know, that explains, you say the assumption, what we're doing is to increase achievement. What if the assumption is also to develop SEL competencies? You talked about that also in your discussion, so that achievement is a means to begin to develop the SEL competencies.
Absolutely, and that comes in through our.
So can you just talk about that as you do your coaching stuff?
Yeah.
There's some want you to be focused on, there's some want you to integrate it with, to see, to show how it's integrated with that SEL.
Absolutely, and I think that comes into like everything that we do within our own plan.
Thank you.
Yes. Definitely something that is where we are centered and focused on as creating students who are owning our learning, right? That looks different, or doesn't look different, sorry, instructionally versus SEL. It's all.
Right, I think, and the coaches will give some examples about how the students are setting their own learning goals or identifying success criteria on a task, which are all aligned to those SEL competencies. So I think you'll see examples of it vary when the teachers are.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, again, thinking about it's not fixing teachers, right? Everyone brings strengths to the table, everyone has different expertise, and we can partner together to really drive the work of the student learning. Drive student learning forward, because what I'm trying to say. And so really thinking about it being this partnership, I know our coaches talked about, like, we're in that work together with them. Those kids in the classrooms get to teach, and that's pretty cool, because then they're excited to see you in the hallway, as he was sharing today, that the kids want her to come in every day. But it is truly like you do become part of that classroom environment. And teaching is hard, teaching is so hard, so why not have a partner to deal with it? And when we think about professional learning, like this is job embedded, authentic, professional learning. Like you have a partner with you, and teaching can be so isolating. They're in their classroom all day long, with the exception of Navy specials and Navy lunch, by themselves as the only adults. So having another person, another teacher in there to collaborate and talk through things and laugh, because kids are hilarious. It just like, it creates that atmosphere of like in it together. And then when we think about that last one, it's really alignment, right? We do not want teachers to feel like coaching has one more thing. It's not, right? You should be co-planning, you're already teaching, so let me come in here, come in there and deal with it. So it's really about creating alignment, we were talking about SL, SLO goals, SOO goals. Today, the few of our schools are really like hoping to receive, like coaching is a way to support you in reaching those. So this is just a little example from Diane's work about how our model truly does differ from other models. And I think a lot of it is in, well, I know a lot of it is in the use of data, right? But also the coaching cycles. So when we really think about, we are trying to create sustainable shifts in teacher behavior through student evidence. That's how we do it, is through the coaching cycles. Like I said, it's not a one and done, like I work with you today, I'll see you again in six months. It's like, I'm here to partner with you through this unit of study, so that we are creating sustainable habitual shifts. So I will actually, well, I'll take, and I'll let my friends take the next one, but. So when we think about structures for Student Center Coaching, there's multiple avenues that they can engage in with our, our in-bowl, being a full cycle. Because we know that change happens over time. So we're working with them over time, that's where we're going to start seeing those shifts, and that's when we're going to be able to see student, or student world happening. So we can co-plan lessons with intentionality around instructional strategies, with intention around SEL. We can co-plan units, and we can do those mini coaching cycles in hopes that those turn into full cycles. We know that that's where change happens. So I will turn it over to my staff, who can speak to you about the work that they're doing. So I will turn it over to my staff, who can speak to you about the work that they're doing at Lily B.
Very good. Thanks, Joy.
Thank you.
You guys want me to fill out your presentation, right?
So just while I was just pulling that up, I know some of you heard of Lily B., just to introduce ourselves. I'm Lindsay Marrow. I'm the instructional technology coach for Lily B.
I'm Cara Arnold. I'm the math coach at Lily B.
I'm Kristin Rock and I'm the literacy consultant and coach at Lily B.
I'm just, I'm trying to open it so that we don't have that sidebar in there. Right, so we thought it would be a really great opportunity for this group to hear firsthand. You know, it's always nice to kind of hear about the theory behind it, but really, what does it look like? So thank you so much to the Lily B. team for coming in and also taking the time to develop this presentation.
Maybe I should ask a question while you're.
Sure.
I'm just wondering about kids with special needs and how that's all integrated with the coaching cycle. And as a teacher, when I was working in the field, I would go in and co-partner with the teacher and we would work together to do the IEP, to meet the child, seeing the IEP. So can you talk a little bit about special services, how that all gets integrated in coaching?
Absolutely.
Do you want?
Oh, you.
He's on it.
We even will.
Okay. Jeff is driving. Jeff's driving tonight. So without further ado, I do just a little hand it over to the team.
So to answer your question, I mean, you want me to, you want to take it?
Go ahead.
I guess the honest answer to that is it's different for all three of us because we're all taking this from very different lenses. So for me, through the lens of technology, the one-to-one devices have been valuable to students. But. With any disability, we're actually going to talk, not necessarily diagnosis, but along those lines. For a second, I'll try to explain. We have an example for you. But it might look a little bit different for literacy and math, so.
And we absolutely, when we're doing the planning, it's all students. We are planning for everyone. We are working directly. We're pulling, looking at individual student goals from IEPs, making sure that we are differentiating. We use a math workshop model in math. So we have differentiated groups and so everyone is addressed with a coaching model.
Yeah, it's all collaborative. So I know I'm coaching into a second grade classroom right now. And we have students with some guests that speak to me. And we're making sure that we're accommodating his needs, but we're also sure of growth. So it's just something that I like to keep on top of with all the kids of, what do I need to know about all your kids in your classroom? So that I'm making the same decisions that you would make if I'm seeing them in a group and you see them in a group, just to make it consistent. So there's a lot of collaboration, not just with the classroom teacher or if you have to speak to a special education teacher or want to go to math or high, because, Lindsay, how can we make their experience and approach a little bit better for them so that they're all reaching?
And it really is, it's all driven by data. So whether standardized testing or kind of total notes that we've taken or some classroom unit tests, like, we really are using that data. So like, when we sit down at the table and plan, the lessons are geared and driven by what each individual student needs for that lesson. And that's where two, sometimes three teachers in a room, plus some are power, like, we can station, we can take centers. And we have that ability to reach more students and our goal is to target it.
So we are the coaching team. Can you go back up to the one right before with our pictures? Can you pull up? So we started the year with spreading our message to the families at Lily B. Hand School. And we have a quick video to share with you. And it really underscores and highlights the reason why we are doing what we are doing. So if you click on that, Jeff should bring you.
So volume.
You don't look so average.
Yeah, we do.
You're asking for way too many things at the same time. Go to control. That's awesome.
That's so excellent.
So we send the message of why we're doing this. And I think it's the reason all of us are in this room right now. It's for the kids. And it puts the needs, student-centered coaching puts the needs of every single student front and center. So in everything that we do, we are looking at each individual child in that class and making the best plan to move forward in all areas of their day.
Let me get back to you. Get out of your video mode.
When you're the driver and everybody's watching you.
I can help if you want.
Okay.
Okay. You're good?
Good, let me share again. Back to.
There we go.
Go ahead, right here, right?
Down to the next slide, please.
Thank you.
So we keep talking about data and how we are constantly collecting and using that to drive. And we didn't want to just talk at you for the entirety of this presentation. We wanted to include you and take you along the journey with us. So I know everybody here has a phone. And if you don't, you have a copy of the presentation. So if you wouldn't mind handing that QR code.
Can I click here?
Yes.
Click because I'm going to screw it up. Or do you want me to?
You can do it with your phone.
It says the video didn't load, but there is a spot to enter a question.
We have a.
Yeah, I think that might just be internet this one, so I would have a hard time going up from my phone too.
Maybe.
We had included a video just for that blended model. I'm sorry to have some students that maybe couldn't read the question. We had a video of Cara reading that question.
Okay.
But since everybody in here is, if I'm able to just fill it in, you're welcome to just fill in the question. I'll give you guys a minute to fill that out and I'm going to pull it up over here. So as you are all taking this, two things that we really wanted to show you with this is data comes in many forms. Some of us are doing standardized testing, some of us are doing classroom tests. And one thing that I could try to show teachers is that we can use technology to collect that data as well. So we actually did in our first grade coaching cycle that we performed similar to this. And some of those students are still pre-readers, use images instead of text, so that we'll be able to take the data. And then me as a teacher, I can collect responses. Is anybody able to successfully commit in?
Yeah, I did.
I did.
So I would be able to come through in turns and I would be able to see individual responses. And so now with the teacher, I know where I'm taking the lesson from here, what are the needs, which ones. So this is the one that we gave to first graders. So they were able to use those images. They scanned it with a QR code just like you, because that's a skill that we've been working on. And then they got here, we read the questions and they were able to use the pictures.
What was the question?
For this one?
Yep.
This one, I can write using pictures, I can write using sequencing words, so first, then next, finally. I can write a story with two or more details. I can write about what I think using four or sentences. And I can use technology, in their case iPads, to write and share my story.
Cool. And then what do they do? Just click the up or the down?
They could, it was thumbs up. If they couldn't, it was thumbs down. And then we used that data with our first grade teacher that was on, I were working with. To kind of say this is where we're at.
Watch, at midnight, you're going to get a bunch of dings. We're trying to sleep tonight.
Okay, so assuming now we have your data, I may just do that for a little fun activity, but also just to kind of walk you through. We kind of anticipated maybe some of your questions and maybe some of the information that you had to kind of move forward through the presentation. So when we're working with our teachers, we meet with them once a week. And we are co-teaching in their classrooms around three times a week. So Jeff, if you want to click on the results-based coaching tool, this is where the coaching cycle really starts. I almost have it memorized because I see it. So this is our result.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is our results-based, results-based coaching tool. And this tool really helps guide us through our cycles. Because along with what Joy said, I'm not going into a cycle because Cara or Lindsay need my help. I'm going into a cycle because I'm noticing some data from friends or they're nice enough when I say, do you want to do a coaching cycle? They'll say yes, so they'll be kind of like, so it looks like that too. So we filled this out together. We brought this up to the staff at the beginning of the year and when we came back to school in August. And we'll let them know that this is what our plan is going to be. So we start with our standard base goal. What is the goal for student learning? So students will look at the data we have, whether it's literacy or math. Learning, whatever, whatever data we have, students will, and we write down what the students will be doing. We also align it to standards. What are the standards that we're going to be achieving to? And then the learning targets are, I can, what are the ones we want the students to know? Just like Lindsay, what she just showed you. I can write a story using first, next, first, then, then, finally. So putting it in student-friendly terms, so the students know why I'm coming in there with your teacher or Lindsay or Cara. So they know why we're coming in there. We break out the data, who's emerging, developing, meeting, exceeding, just so we have a baseline of where our students are. So we need to strategically improve them. A whole group lesson, a small group lesson, this helps us here. The next part is the instructional practice. And when we're meeting with them, it's what instructional practices will help the students reach them. What is the teacher's goal to do? Instructional coaching, we just kind of set, we kind of preset some practices that might apply. Like, obviously, we're going to be doing goal setting together, we're going to be creating learning targets. We analyze the student work, we're going to be doing that in our planning, but also every time we're in there for coaching. So it drives our next day's co-teaching. Co-teaching, collecting student evidence, collabing, and anything else they can add that they want us to support them. So it really is a true partnership. It's a we in coaching. It's not a me, I don't own this, the teacher doesn't own it, we own it, and we work, we work on it together. We come back to this every time we meet, like every week we'll come back to this because it just focuses our conversation, so we don't get sidetracked. We're not talking about something else that's come up. Or we're really focusing on, these are our targets and we're looking at student evidence. So we really want it to be purposeful, meaningful, and intentional. Maybe I have to go back to the coaching log.
Let me see if I. Sharon for a second. The toolbar is going that way. If you were, so. Click on those.
And the coaching logs, I just love that we're going to play up in a minute. They're just kind of strategy questions for us to be focused on as coaches and to have conversations that are really targeted with teachers. So again, we're not getting off topic. They're not getting off topic, and it's all around student-centered evidence.
You want to click on the logs?
Yeah, I'll show just to see a whole of it. I don't have to go through them all.
Okay.
But this is also part of our work when we're co-planning with teachers. So then Lindsay will go into more in-depth about this. But it's just identifying the coaching cycle goal. What is the goal for student learning for this coaching cycle? What do we hope the students will learn as a result of our partnership? And the questions are really specific because it is a partnership. And we wanted to embed that in every question that we have. Is there any data that will inform us as we set our goal? What standards is this goal addressed? And is there a specific unit in the curriculum that we go with? Again, this is all in that results-based coaching tool. These are the techniques that we're discussing and we're putting our information on.
I can say, I'm a former specialist teacher. The coaching log five, I found super helpful. Cara had actually pointed it out to me. It so well delineates the goals between the teachers. So again, as a former specialist teacher, it can take a really long time to put back that co-teaching blend with another professional, right? Well, that log really helps because it very clearly identifies, if I'm taking the lead at the beginning of the lesson, what is your role at that point? And then when we switch, like, what will that look like? And it kind of helps in smoothing that transition with two adults sharing that goal.
And it also helps with students too, that they see two teachers in their classroom. So if we were to walk in there, you should really see who is the teacher and the support person. It's you have two teachers in that co-teaching collaboratively together. So it just looks like that, but it should also feel like that for the teachers and with our kids. So this is just how to identify the coaching cycle goal and create learning targets. Again, these are just guiding questions that help us focus on our conversations. What is the goal for student learning for this coaching cycle? What do we hope the students learn? Will learn as a result of our partnership? And what data will inform us as we set our goal? So you can see it's all about the students.
I had a question. Yeah, so I think this, these questions in these forums are really specific and well organized. I'm just trying to get my head around, you said you're in a teacher's classroom three times a week. And I'm looking at log page 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and then the other sheet that, I mean, how many pages of paperwork got filled out per week, per teacher?
Those are our coaching logs that we can't fill out or we just use your guiding questions. So we're not.
Okay, I'm just thinking, oh, my God. How much?
So that results-based tool helps us in an initial meeting. We establish what the goal is going to be, we talk about the learning targets and what the overall goals are.
Based on your comment earlier on, how are you being received? I'm assuming you guys are full of energy and I think most people would be wanting to work with you. So you're not hanging out with the lights off somewhere.
I think so, that's just, we just wanted to share with you some of the work and some of the work we're doing with Joy. So those are, a lot of that is for us to kind of guide discussions, but that's not, we don't fill that out with the whole.
Well, okay.
We only have 40 minutes, you know.
Yeah, I'm looking at, just saying, wow, this is great, but it would take me, you know, two planning periods just to prepare for the.
No, and I think some of our goals are like for an initial planning, some of it is just, we might just be filling out the first column of our results-based coaching tool. And maybe that's what the teacher's gonna do. And then we go in there and we might have just a quick conversation to advance our co-teaching. But then when we come back, we might tell them, hey, what's our next step? So we're not filling out the whole tool at once, because the end is the results anyway. So we're just walking them through it slowly. So teachers have to be teaching coaching cycles this year. We're not going to be dealing with paperwork because they're never going to come back.
Right, and it's not, the point is not to be compliant with filling out paperwork. The point is to be working collaboratively. It's really about the conversation and the work that you're doing together. It's not about completing paperwork. That is definitely not the intention behind it.
And those are just guiding questions. Those aren't.
Okay, yeah.
Did you answer that question?
But it is a good question.
That's our, our coaching is really our conversations. So that's a good question. It's not, if that looks like a lot, then it's not a way. So I'm glad we clarified that. So these are learning targets. These are I can statements that right now Kara's working with. So here are some I can statements right here. Writing equations to solve a word problem, create a model to show how they solve the problem. And when they understand what they're doing, they can clearly elaborate on it. And then you know right then and there if they got it, if they're struggling with it. And then there's some simple I can statements for first grade writing, using pictures, using sequencing words, sequencing words, anything that those are.
Good stuff. Quick question, Matt, what I've talked about before in terms of the, I'm thinking of the figure-ground relationship between content and metacognition. You know, all these things are about content, yet you spoke before about working on skills such as the SCL competencies. Do you also, how do you blend those two together? I mean, it looks to here like the figure issue out here is going to be explicitly focused on addition and subtraction. And somehow that other issue is going to be in the background. Do you ever flip it such that the metacognitive competencies are in the statements? And the addition, subtraction is a means for the end to get to that?
So I think.
Okay, how would you do that?
Well, what we're focusing on right now is we're just, this is our first coaching cycle, so we haven't even finished them yet. But I think we were really kind of driving at student-centered data. We just got the results of our fall assessments, and we're trying to dive into that first. Just so teachers understood that it was student-centered data and not a teacher weakness or coming in for a teacher support.
So these are student competencies. And the follow-up question is, how are you going to track the development of those?
Barry, if I can chime in, I think that's not the, are you talking about the SCL competencies component that you were alluding to?
I'm just looking at the, you know, the end, or towards what end are we doing this?
I think, you know, in respect to the teachers who come here, this is, they're just at the end of a six-week cycle. They're focused on standards of the content area and outcomes associated with those standards. When I read through these learning targets, I actually see a lot of metacognition in these statements. For example, I can assess my work using a problem-solving rubric. So I know that they'll share examples about how they identify, how will I be successful if I do this? And then able to actually assess their work according to that rubric. So I think that the skills that it's there, the extent to which it's explicit at this point, we're not there in the coaching cycle model yet.
And Lindsay's going to go through.
This is me. So at the beginning, we set, we have our baseline data. So we are looking at what the students are doing at the beginning. You can see at the top, this is an example, we use three different data points to look at what the students were doing. The bottom is one of those samples of what Lindsay got when they used the first grade. So that's a snippet of what that looked like. When we are looking at the baseline data, we're looking and we're asking ourselves, does this data indicate any ways? That we need to shift our learning targets? If so, how do we do that? Now, based on the data, where should we be starting with the students? What are our groups going to look like? What is that first day of instruction going to look like? How are we going to collect the next piece? Are we going to make sure that the students know what they're doing and have met their learning target for that day? After we do that, we move into our co-planning and co-teaching. And this is an exciting time, I would say, when we're getting into this. We meet once a week, we decide on a goal. We look at what we want the students to be able to do, we do student work to guide the next lesson. We look at different ways in gathering evidence on how the students are growing within the classroom. We also look at, we have our planner, we're looking at who is doing what, who is taking the lead at different points of the lesson? And how we're going to seamlessly blend the two teachers or three teachers into the classroom at that time. So going in to the next slide. We can share how it's been looking at L E Bs. And it really is, when we were doing our planning, I'm in two different third-grade classrooms at this time. And I can tell you the instruction in the classroom, while it's the same, it looks very different based upon the needs of those students. So we don't go in as coaches saying, this is what we have to do, this is the lesson, we know this is a great lesson. We're going to do the same lesson in every single classroom. We are looking as teachers, we're looking at the evidence, and then we're planning day to day based on what the students sitting in front of us need at that moment. So in this particular classroom, we were looking at strategies to solve problems. Excuse me just a second. Looking at addition and subtraction, how they're related, how they're related, using what they know to solve problems. We really wanted the students to take ownership of their learning. And you can see, we talked about them really thinking about where they were in their understanding. We started talking to them, you can see it's a Harry Potter-loving class. So we started with talking about thinking, where are you? Are you a novice? Are you an apprentice? We used words, you've become a practitioner, you can do this on your own. Have you hit that expert phase where you can turn around and you can teach this to somebody else? So in looking at this, to give the students ownership of it. We were finding in this particular classroom that there were a number of students where a problem was put in front of them. They didn't know where to go. They weren't independent with their, they were asking questions, they were very quick to come up to myself, come up to the classroom teacher. And so we decided to put it into their hands and we created a student-created strategy book. So when we introduced this to the kids, they were so excited. They, excuse me, so they have, in each of the pages, I'm ahead of myself. In each of the pages, we started talking to them. They'd have one for addition, one for subtraction, one for multiplication. The students started getting really excited. They're like, can we put one for decimals? How about for fractions? We said, oh, absolutely. So we put that in there. And you can see the students are at this point using the student strategy book to help them with their instruction, to help them with their problems. So we have one little girl who was struggling with her addition and subtraction. Every time mom was put in front of her, she would wait. And the other day, she opened up her student strategy book, she opened up to her page. She looked at the notes that she had made to herself on how to solve the problem. And she got right down to business and she looked at us afterwards and said, oh my gosh, I did it. So it was really exciting. Going down the next classroom. We were really looking at problem solving and students making sense of problems and persevering and solving them. So we went through problem-solving steps, and the students created. We wanted them to be able to assess their own work and determine where they were. So we gave them examples and not examples of really strong pieces of student answers. And they created their own rubric, which in turn they now use on a daily basis to assess their own work. And so we've been practicing math discourse and having conversations with one another. And you can hear the kids saying, oh, you have to remember, you need a solution sentence. Or I'm not sure how you solved that problem, or remember to have an equation there. So the conversation within the classroom and the ownership of the students is really impressive. So you can see the students sharing their own work and modeling with mathematics.
So our next slide is.
Yes.
This is exactly what I was trying to push at, that if teachers, I'm very worried about the fact that teachers are so overwhelmed and burned down and everything.
Yeah.
And the more that they see them being loaded on with, well, here are six strategies for addition, 24 for multiplication, whatever. It just overwashes them.
Yeah.
If you can go in and simplify and coalesce all that stuff, it's like, all you have to do as a teacher is, here's how you turn over the kid.
Yeah.
You know, that's the beauty of focusing in on metacognition as the bigger issue. As opposed to the 28 different methods that are going to overwhelm them. So what you're doing is, I think, is a response to what we're seeing is a tremendous burnout that teachers have. Because you're coalescing and you're focusing and you're making their task much more fun. So I applaud you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
So this slide, I just put out some I can data, so I'm working with a secondary class and a first grade class. So the secondary class, the unit of study was decoding strategies. So that was just a two-week unit. So I was in there for this coding strategies. And then we kind of moved into the partner talk unit, having meaningful discussions about different types of tests. So as they're reading and talking, I'll sit down, I'll join, I'll join two kids, or sometimes there's like a group of three. And I'm listening about, what book are you reading? And what are you thinking about? Why do you like this book? And what did you notice? Making connections, having the other kids comment. And we've made an anchor chart by this time about, I agree, I think the author's winning. They can talk about what they, how they feel, they can talk about questioning the author. And it's really cool to see second graders talk about, I don't know why the author put this in there, because I would put this. And they are becoming, like, that's up, that's it. They're, you know, they're not just reading something, okay, this is what it is. You can actually hear and feel their thinking, which is so amazing when it's seven and eight. So that was kind of cool, just sitting down with different groups. And again, the teacher just pairs the kids, or sometimes they partner with, they decide who their partners are. But the partner talk unit is so much fun, because they're getting different kinds of books every day from their book bin, books that they can read. I'm listening to their reading strategies that they're using while they're reading. It is so cool and just like hear them, I can just question and author. I mean, they don't even think twice. They're like, I think I would put this in there, or I don't know if I would put this speech bubble in there. If I would put this, or I would use an explanation mark, because that's really meaningful. I mean, you can hear their learning through these partner conversations, so that's really cool. And then in first grade, we're focusing on, we can say it the same time.
So there.
We're just focusing on really the foundational skills. So I see there's small groups. So we actually have a group of four or five in grade there. And we are using whiteboards, we are using foundation letter tiles, and they are rhyming, they're using beginning sounds. They're manipulating the beginning sounds to make new words. They, I think they're so quick when they erase and then they write, and they're like, I got it, I got it. I mean, when they have, it's time for them to flip over their new word, they all see everybody has it. I mean, so you see that instantaneous learning. So it's just fun and it's such an opportunity that we have this year to be in classrooms where I'm seeing all the kids in the classroom. And again, not just, you know, the kids who are struggling. So that's exciting to me, so that's what happened in the first and secondary classes.
So for me, what's interesting about the technology piece, so that when Tara will be going through the math class. And when Kristen goes in, it's definitely going to be for a literacy class. But for me, with technology, I'm also a teacher, so we can't really cover anything. It's just through the lens of psychology. So it's just showing them how to implement learning into their classroom already. So the Canibard team had reached out to me that they were interested in a coaching cycle. And so what we decided to do was focus on the SCL curriculum, the Shu love curriculum. And so we did, the first week was just courage. And so you can see on the right-hand portion of the screen there, that's a jam board. So students were able to tell me what they thought in their words courage meant. And then they were able to tell me, they chose their city color. And we gave them, you know, authors to their statements, that's what we went on an anchor chart in the classroom. Then they also told me what they thought, who they thought exemplified courage. And then they too, the teachers wrote a book that we kind of, we geared toward that overall theme. So they had their story to the students. And we had them do a seesaw activity where they had to identify what the main character did that showed courage. And then they voice report that. And then the last day of that first week, they created a Wixi, which is that student drawing that are on the screen. They create a Wixi, so they have to make a personal connection. One of the times that they need courage, is that they overcome it, that they still feel like they need courage, so that's another thing. And again, they voice report that. When I'm in there doing tech, it's nice, because it also gives teachers the exposure to a textbook that they might not have thought to use for this one. So it's kind of too cool. The second week, we did kindness, and we followed a similar pattern, except this time with the jam board. I created a sort, so the students got to come up and tell me what was kindness, what was not an example of kindness. Then we also did a book, and we did a seesaw activity related to that. I also had a digital puzzle, I think it might be on the second, the next page of this. I had found a Google Slides digital puzzle. And so some of the students there in that integrated classroom came up and they were collaborating, working together to figure out how to solve a puzzle that was a kindness message. And then that middle icon there, the last thing that I have been doing, which they have been super excited about. We have been using a website called Pixon, and the students have created their own avatars. And so it's sort of going to be like a plaque family. They each get to take home their avatar, or their main character, we're calling it. They are going to use their iPads, and every time they are caught using kindness, showing courage. Or this week, we are moving in towards gratitude. Anytime they are caught with one of those things, we take a picture and then we're going to take those pictures. And they will create their first digital book in Book Creator. And then they will get to share that. So they have been super excited, you know, to get 75-year-olds to sit there and create their own avatar. They were very true. And they were very polite. There's also.
It's amazing, yeah, that.
One final comment. One of the things, again, the other problem, as I say, with the teachers feeling very, very overwhelmed and burned out. And when we talk about issues of like, what is the theory of cognition that's behind your instruction? That the issue of formalism is really a hard method to use, but the examples that you've given of social cognition, when the kids are talking together. How you set it up, embodied cognition, basically the structure of the class around them. And in, I'm sorry, that was embedded cognition, embodied cognition in terms of their actual reactions. Really is a demonstration of how, if we could use those theories of cognition. It really makes the role of the teacher a lot easier, a lot easier. So when we introduce those as new ideas, it's not as ideas that are going to complicate teachers' life, because it's something new. But it's a tool that I think you're already going. And if we could basically get them to understand that, that it's really going to make their jobs a lot easier. And it's not, it's not an add-on, you know, it's not something down on high. It's something that's going to make their jobs easier and it's going to better enhance student learning. So thank you so much, that really is a very explicit, excellent, well-thought-out model of how social cognition, embedded cognition, embodied cognition works very well to make a teacher's job easier. So thank you.
Thank you. So Kristen and I have been fortunate to co-coach in a co-teaching cycle. So we are doing literacy and technology in first grade. We are working with students on beginning, middle, and end, beginning to use transition words. So first, next, then, finally. And I think the one thing we have truly learned from this is sometimes the impact you see is students go beyond the data on the paper. You know, coming off of COVID, some of these students have really not had much exposure. You know, coming off of COVID, some of these students have really not had much exposure to writing in a classroom setting. And so we worked so hard at the beginning of just teaching them how to find an appropriate place to write so that you can concentrate. And when we walk in now, they are independently grabbing their clipboard, trapping their papers, taking a space they don't to sit away from their friends. And they take their own quiet space in a corner of the room and they get to write it. And that was one thing even the teacher we're working with, that intentional planning, she would go to her top table and the kids would flock to her. And so now we work on doing a center or focusing other way. And the kids are independently sitting and writing. So that was an impact beyond something we sort of foresee on.
We're watching their stamina as writers too. I mean, at first they were, you know, just writing, some were writing letters and writing full sentences. And now they're following the pattern of the sequencing words. So the ICANN statements that they were at the beginning of the thumbs up, the thumbs down, what they can do. That's part of, part of our co-teaching in there. And but it is, it's fun to watch them write. They are, they are so independent. That we have, it's kind of helped us where we're not sitting. Because when we're sitting, they're coming. So when we're walking around and we're talking to them and having these conversations, they are where they are. So we're noticing that their stamina is just, it's so, it's increased in the last couple of weeks. And to speak up, it was just, we just kind of noticed that. Yeah.
Yeah. And one thing that we really wanted to put the focus again, because they, they lost so much pen to paper writing over the pandemic. But we didn't want to lose that with incorporating technology. So one thing that we have done in there is we have had sea saw activities where the students will draw out their pre-writing of what they plan to write about. And then they narrate that. And then they too, you can see they're writing paper on the right hand side. They sit with their iPad on one side and they're writing paper on the other and they can listen. And then they get to say, hey, you and I are listening. So we're still, we're still using that tech component, but we're keeping that important as we're teaching them writing. So.
Last two slides, sorry.
So yeah, this is our favorite. You know, we've spoken a lot tonight about that, that SEL piece. And so just again, the impact of coaching beyond maybe the numbers. Kristen and I had a student in our first recital. There is not a diagnosis that we're aware of, but she electively does not speak in class or in school period. And so that was very challenging. She's not sharing. She's not participating in something. And so we were doing a writing piece where they're sharing. So we thought it was a struggle in the beginning. But this student has now independently sat with Kristen and I. And would you mind playing the video that we have?
Where am I clicking? Anywhere. Okay.
So it's something that literally brings us to tears all the time we listen to it. Because again, she's just collectively deciding not to speak, but she has now felt comfortable enough with that in the setting. And it really speaks to the power of this one to one device, where because of the power of the device in her hand, she would be able to still share. We were able to share with the whole class without the vulnerability and perhaps they have it for her peers. So it really is a powerful tool.
That's excellent.
A lot of work going.
One final thing.
Yeah.
In preparation for tonight, when I saw this was coming up, I tend to go to the research literature to see what is the link between certain educational practices and student outcomes. When I first went in and looked at coaching models, I expected that the literature was going to show that it was profoundly impactful. It wasn't, you know, it was kind of all over the place. And as I dug further into the research, what it showed was that there's a high correlation between the effectiveness on student achievement and learning. And the amount of time the coach has spent with the teacher in the classroom. And where it falls down is where coaches like you get pulled into administrative activities, get pulled into meetings, get pulled into coverage and get pulled into other things. So the higher the percentage of your time that goes directly in the classroom, the more effective you're going to be with, you know, your primary job is effective student learning. So it's a caution to you and also to at least that you should basically card your time as best you can to make sure that if anybody wants to pull you out for, oh, we want you in this meeting or we want you to do this administrative task. Say, no, my job is primarily with teachers. You mentioned seventy thirty before. I would go higher than that. You know, if you could get up to like a ninety, ten, I mean, you're here for the kids, you know, and that's where we need you. Not in administrative meetings, you know, not in planning meetings, but in the classroom with teachers. So the more that we can get them on kind of ninety, ten, you know, would be great. We get the return for what we hire them.
We're working on it. It's a journey for sure. And we're really hoping that through this model, we will see less referrals into tier two and tier three as a result of the work that's being done at the core. That's really, and I, I know you all know that I've been speaking so passionately about this model and how much I believe in it. I think you saw a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank you all. I talked at the presentation and this model is just absolutely outstanding. It's like, I felt it. And I think everybody, I, it's just absolutely outstanding. And then of course, the logistics of all three. And it just comes through. So the interactiveness, the presentation, the visuals, all of these different factors is just overwhelmingly awesome. So I just wanted to say it because I really did truly feel it. I got a little bit of a taste with the triple A. And then you guys just, I have enjoyed it very, very much.
That's very good.
And thanks so much to Joy for coming and joining us.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joy.
So if it's okay, I'd like to excuse everybody.
Good night, everybody. Good night. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shannon.
We'll be talking more about our coaches and budget process too.
Yeah.
Very good.
Continued work. Night of a few presentations.
That was really good. I mean, that was, that was amazing.
It was.
And many of you heard the pathways presentation, but David, we can do a abbreviated version of, you know.
It was really good.
Hello, everyone again, promotion board. And my name is David Casulo. I'm the five oh four NTSS and Pathways Board Leader at High School. We have a presentation I did for the triple A. I don't have an abbreviated version, but we can replay that if you'd like. I can go through it. We had a lot of information for triple A. We talked about NTSS. We talked about pathways. So if the board would like, I can quickly go through that for some of the members who weren't here.
I think this, yeah.
With the highlights of these slides that we have in here. So just our pathways are opportunities to enhance high quality education with experiential learning opportunities to advance and support students in their post-secondary learning and career choices. We kind of talked about ELOs and what they are. Experiential learning opportunities, again, talks to the State Department of Ed and the Department of Labor Language. So it's internships, whether paid or unpaid, volunteering and that type of thing. We talked about kind of the, the targeted population ideally. So about seventy five percent of our students, Eastline High School go to four-year colleges. About ten percent attended two-year college. The data point we're looking at, over six years, about sixty six percent graduate from a four-year institution. And six percent graduate, six percent of the ten percent graduate from the two-year institution. So we do have, you know, close to twenty five percent of the student population that we want to look at a different, different paths. Coastal Connections has done a wonderful job. So a lot of the lessons I learned while I was at Coastal and that with learning through the pandemic, we're now going to apply to the high school setting and using experiential learning opportunities. Coastal did a great job of creating a curriculum for the LTI program. They've done a good job with some of the mentor rubrics, which we'll also use at Eastline High School. We've opened up some of our past internship experiences. Bartol HVAC is a good example. We had very good success with those guys. And some of our recent ones, Port Niantic, I talked about the marine trades, which I'm very excited about. Opened up great opportunities. The marine trades like Port Niantic, they're looking at hold and train these kids and hold and train these individuals. So they're looking kind of an SEO piece. They want his kid to show up, who's willing to work hard. And they're willing to put the time and money into training these guys for different electronic certifications, engine certifications, fiberglass certification. So they're, they're really on board with us. We're, we're proud to be working with us. One of the rubrics for the mentors, so as we communicate with mentors for Coastal Connections, I'd mentioned Coastal Connections is more of a high need population. So we're very close to the mentors and our communication is very strong with the high school students. It's kind of a less needs population on many of the circumstances. Still going to utilize this rubric with our mentors and the students required to tie their learning goals to a summative assessment or summative reflective essay. But this is great work. It was done by Coastal Connections. They put a tremendous amount of effort into this. We're really proud of that work. We talked about career concentrations is one thing that we've seen an uptick in, mostly due to our fabulous committee, Lori Singer, Jessica Garcia, and Ursus Green. We had an uptick in students applying last year. It sounds like it was average around seventeen students would get confirmation letters that they could use for their college transcripts. This year we had forty seven letters go out in October. Students can use them on their college transcripts or if they move to different post-secondary opportunities. We initiated utilizing cooperation with Eastern Connecticut Manufacturing Pipeline Initiative. I meet with those guys monthly now, part of a different consortium as well. We proctored the manufacturing skills assessment for interested juniors and seniors. So this assessment is the first step, if you want to be considered for a manufacturing training class, which is pretty much a free class in combination with Three Rivers. For six weeks, and these train the students for a varied of skills. Welding is one of the particular add-ons for the assessment. Carpentry, I know we had two students this past summer do the summer internship program. It's paid forty hour a week work experience at EB. They're going to be invited back. They're probably guaranteed jobs. We've got a lot of positive reports. They did the carpentry piece. And also when I speak with EB and these folks, our CAD program is so strong, they're willing to hire designers right out of our high school. But directly out because of our CAD program. So the manufacturing skills assessment can again be taken, will, will begin proctored in the spring. If students had a hard time on the first round of the assessment, we can work with them. They can retake the assessment to get a passing grade. We're anticipating a larger number in the spring of students who really, after the college application process has gone out, some of the kids getting closer to graduation. You know, I think they really would like some more information on particular post-secondary opportunities. So I think this is a great assessment. It's kind of like the ASAPAD. It kind of shows some strengths and weaknesses. But again, it opens up the door for these guys for this training program. Another thing I mentioned I liked about this program, the seniors are connected with someone from the American Job Center and they're connected with the Eastern Connecticut Workforce Initiative Board. So even post-graduation, July, August, September, November, these guys are connected with people really trying to work with them as far as a post-secondary interest. So we're going to bring experiential learning opportunities to Eastline High School. We have a curriculum more or less shadowing the Coastal Connections curriculum. The recognition for these experiential learning opportunities for students at Eastline High School will be similar to the career concentrations recognition. So for career concentrations, where student is taking the required classes, they get a certificate that they can utilize for college or for post-secondary transition assistance. They also get something on their transcript, which notes their work that they've done with us recently. These are some of the classes that we're dovetailing for the career, for the east, for the experiential learning opportunities. We're kind of focusing on the career and technical education classes. I've met with this group quite often. The CTE teachers are very much on board. They're very supportive. This is just a great group of folks that can help us move forward with this initiative. And again, our first ELO candidate, Victoria. So she is looking to be a special education teacher. Her learning goals will be tied to her birth, the three plate group class, which she has taken. The special needs class and AP psych is a current class. And as I looked into the program of studies, I think her learning goals could also be tied into that class as well. Her ELO site is the Flanders Before and After School Program. We're very proud of first candidate. So just some experiential learning opportunities. This is a young man who was at Coastal, who is now employed partly Eastline Scholarship. ELOs are a valuable tool to enhance student learning, support more diverse, equitable, inclusive learning environment, strengthen student focus. Again, as far as DEI audit for the May two, students crave more opportunities for experiential learning. We want to increase the trade classes and technical education options for students. This is a former student who did an internship over the Mystic Seaport. This is part of his internship piece. Again, we talked about marine trades, I think is something that we really could look into. There's just so many opportunities and so many supportive businesses in this area. EB has been very supportive with us and it's not just EB. We work with the Eastern Connecticut Trades. It's Pratt and Whitney, it's other small manufacturers. A lot of folks are really, really willing to hire these folks. And as I went onto the Governor's Workforce Council meetings, it looks like new workforce is really looking for, yes, SLE, so looking for a person who's going to show up and do a good work. And they're really, as possible, looking for schools to set up kind of micro skills. So these ELOs really fit into those micro skills. We have a good person with these typical skills. They're not necessarily looking at four-year degrees as much as I understand it through the council. And then as a speaker from the DEI.com, we had a good presentation as well. So this is what we're trying to move forward with. I think we've got a good start so far. I think this is just going to build so much positive community connections and momentum. I'm really looking forward to this opportunity.
Yeah. See how quickly Dave is coming up with actions with the community. Some of these job opportunities, because we were worried we lost all those. And because now we've got, you know, high school as well, so kudos.
I have one quick question. I'm just thinking about, if you take an eighteen to a nineteen to a twenty year old and he enter or he or she enters the workforce, what kind of training do you give them in professional train, in professionalism, like when you're interacting with a client, or maybe that's not part Or maybe that's not part of it, or interacting with their boss, or how to be supervised? I mean, I'm just thinking about, a long time ago, I used to manage about twenty-year-olds and younger. And that always seemed to be kind of a missing piece, but I don't know if that's, is that something you focus on? Or just assume it'll come with maturity?
For the Coastal Connections piece, so that's a credit-bearing piece? So they do have a good curriculum that will focus on all those kind of soft skills per se. And they're very good at it, they're very specific on what their scope and sequence is to prep a student for those, for those type of skills. For the ELO piece, this is a non-credit-bearing piece. This is an endorsement. And when they have, when I meet with the student, we go through their learning goals. We'll also kind of talk through some of those soft skills. When I, the mentor will fill out a rubric that actually has some of those skills. So when we check on the student, we'll talk through that as well. But our capacity right now, I think the endorsement is a great start for Eastline High School. I think Coastal Connections has done a fantastic job of building a solid foundational curriculum for those students. But at this point, that's kind of where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, excellent. The other question, I'm sorry, it's very.
Very, very good one. I'll plug you on this, this is really good in terms of the metacognitive, SCL type of competition, this is excellent. Comment I had to make before, and I do this, I don't know really how to do this, because your program is excellent, it's solid, you know, it's right here. You know, I think I told you before, I've been working with pipeline pathways for about six, three years. And now upon the Advisory Council of the Governor's Workforce Council. Know they're doing, know the direction they're going, know the money coming down for it. There is an option out there to take this program and improve it. Mag, you know, magnificently, like they're talking like a way to set it up as a K through twelve, K through community college. They were, they partnered with Three Rivers, they're taking courses up at Three Rivers and getting college credit, or they're getting high school credit. And there's lots of money coming down to it, but I don't want to push it, because I know that. The current state of the teachers, or they're overloaded, burned out, you know, trying to just basically, you know, make it from day to day. So I don't want to push that, but I just want to say, if at any point it becomes an idea that you want to expand. You know, there are options out there for it, and I can help make up connections for you to get access to that funding and access to those models.
We're very open to talk. And I have to pay attention to that, I'm waiting for, I might not list that's more information. But no, I think that's fantastic. So like I said, we talked about earlier about the new manufacturing pipeline initiative. Little hesitant on that, as far as the resources it will take. I think you're right, I think there's other resources coming, a lot, the manufacturing piece, Three Rivers is a piece of that. No, I think we're excited to look at those opportunities.
On the advisory council, they're looking for a small group of pilot schools, you know.
We'll do it.
Email, let me know.
We get a very gun-shy about saying, here is something.
There's nothing more, yeah.
Yeah, we got to be careful, we don't want to put anything more on.
I don't want to push anything that's, you know, good stuff, I don't, I'm very gun-shy on that.
I know.
You know, I will say, just, you know, going through the YMTI, this manufacturing pipeline initiative process, we're learning this as well. So, you know, you say gunshot, maybe we're not there to do a particular initiative. But I can tell you, we're learning a lot, how we can improve our programs just in this conversation. It's all good.
Yeah, excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, wow, wow. Thanks for your patience, a lot of presentation. Yeah, there's a lot of other good things going on, we want to make sure we got information to you, you know, this time of year especially, so. Okay, the next, the next item is a update on the DEI school-based committees, and Jeff, I know you're going to just.
Yeah, let me, let me give you some, just some highlights, bullet points that some of the schools had shared. And then if you want to, in the next meeting, or, you know, we can bring some members of the committees or the principals can share a little bit. A lot of SCL focus that's occurring as it's really, you know, there's a lot of stress going on across our schools, both with, you know, students and staff. So that was a theme through all this. At the elementary level, they are working on communication. So their committee has, remember, we have one school-based committee for the elementaries in the three schools. So their focus is around communications and being more accessible, more translations, native languages, et cetera. Additional PB opportunities as well for teachers and staff, they're kind of looking at that. And then that SCL, want to bring forth that sense of belonging and acceptance, you know, for every student walks through our doors. Committee is looking at developing themes for each month as a starting point with book recommendations, possible activities to promote equity and so forth. So progress, they're progressing, I know it's November, but you know, things are moving really quickly. At the middle school, six students have volunteered to become part of the Elm School Based Committee. Those are all seventh and eighth grade students, so it's great to have kids part of it. They have so far developed and distributed a calendar to all the staff regarding monthly meeting times. They designated a committee to have all meetings, you know, open to all staff, so, you know, other staff that aren't part of the committee want to attend, they can. They've set up bulletin boards, first bulletin board is dedicated to highlighting committee members, describing the role of their school-based committee. And communication for their focus for the year. And the second board is identifying diverse groups and celebrating diversity, which is an important piece of the issues we had last year. So again, they're trying to work towards, you know, attacking some of those issues of the past. And just want to PCM to their work to identify additional hands-on experiences for students and adults in the building as well. So just kind of a snippet of where the middle school is at right now, and then at the high school. You've got fourteen, fourteen members of their faculty are part of their committee and four student representatives. They go rotating bases from cultural awareness, GSA clubs. They are working on using restorative practices, acknowledging past missteps and harm. That has been caused to members of the community or students. Establishing school committee norms under respect and inclusion. Also collaborating with the Public Art for Racial Justice Education, that Sister Mural project. That's going on with the North Public Schools and Old Line, some other schools, so they're looking at that. And then lastly, committee members and administration are working with student volunteers on school-wide programming. Adviser to continue reinforcement of school and community norms under respect and inclusion. So things are progressing. Again, I think our focus is on SCL right now, that's a big piece, as well as that equity component, which we had at the beginning of the year. And, you know, the committees can really work to attack issues and problems that, you know, that come up. I know that at the high school, that issue that we had regarding racial posts about a month ago. You know, the committee took a look at that, and that's where that comes in, where they're looking at those restorative practices. So that's kind of just a quick update of where, you know, where they are. And, you know, as you move forward, want to continue to have, maybe some of our committee members come and cheer up some of the work they're doing. But those groups are well underway and it's, you know, baseline, which is good.
I'm wondering, how many languages do we have in our community?
Oh boy, that's a good question. Let me know roughly, languages we have. There's.
So in talking with the influx of students that we have, and the fact that we have to break that language barrier. There, from what I heard, we're definitely at least seven to eight different languages at the elementary level alone.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
There's seventeen, how their presence in the development, just sent out, break down by school of every language.
You were sorry, you said elementary, there's seventeen.
That's growing. Our website translates into multiple languages now by the click of a button. So we recently moved that. That should be in this year, so we're moving in that direction. And just continued work, but. So just wanted to share it.
Yeah.
Brought up before that this has a new SCL model. The comments under that model are very much more in line with the DEI program than they were in the past. So if we use the new model, that was recently published, I think it would help integrate what your emphasis is with SCL with the DEI initiative.
Very good, and yes. Excellent to Kim Davis, who's supporting our SCL.
That's good. So I would, yeah, I would think, I would think hearing, you know. But one that's, you know, appropriate, having agenda topic where you actually hear from one of the committees.
Yeah, it'd be great to bring up.
Be really good.
Just a few committee members, and just can kind of talk about, you know, some of the continued, continue work, or maybe even, you know. As appropriate, attacking a problem or an issue that, you know, the school might have had, and, you know, without identifying, sure, identify students, but do, all right, something along those lines.
Good, excellent, okay. Okay, move on to next item for discussion and action, and that's board goal. For, for the board of ed, for this year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Jeff and I put together a little packet, draft and so forth, and presented it to everybody for our last meeting. Asked for some comments to come back, and we've got some comments back. Most of them were focused under goal number four, for the reimagining of peace. And I, we made, we made some adjustments to that, to that goal. Kind of make it a little more specific, coming up with a reimagining plan specifically for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And then also really looking at new frameworks on strategic processes for leading the district and framing board goals in the future. Really good comments. So that, I mean, that was basically it. And again, as, as always, I think it's good to have, board have goals. We will have a, two new members coming onto the board, and I will disappear, John will disappear. And, and what the new board decides to do with goal, but this would be, this would be at least, I think, a good starting point. For the, for the board to, to have, and, and as, as things evolve and whatever. I'm sure, I have a lot of confidence that as we come, continue to come out of the recovery phase from COVID. And enter into this, this new phase, I think it's going to be a really exciting time for, for the board and for the administrative team. And I think Barry's comments about just wanting to make sure we're not overloading the system was, was, was very, very good. So we have to be very aware of the pain. So that's, I don't know.
Have an ask, that can we work harder on goal three? So, and I, it's not funny, because it just keeps taking a backseat to everything else. And I feel like maybe once a quarter, and we have so much work to do, that we need to do a job of needing.
Comments or, buddy, we said on this. Okay. I mean, you want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the board of goals for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. School year, school year.
And second, early discussion, comment?
Was hoping we wouldn't do that.
Yeah, but, you know, I think it's a good, I think it's a good, a good place.
I understand you do it.
Yeah.
I mean, you know my position on this update. I understand you did a great job, and I applaud you for that, and, you know, you worked at it, and then you kind of gave it to us. There were lots of input to it. And I don't think that the revisions absolutely reflect the depth and breadth of the input was there. And I think so, it's, you know, you basically reengineer them as you saw them. I don't see that these reflect, you know, the entire boards. I was hoping that this would kind of. Be kind of an unofficial document that might just be new guidance, but if we're now having out there is a. It's a motion, and it's going to become official, I would be very, I mean, I would abstain from that. You know, I wouldn't endorse it, because I, because of the process, I don't think that they really reflect. I think that. They are kind of status quo, they are a little, kind of like the way things are, even a little backward thinking. They, I don't think they are proactive, and forward thinking is, I see what the board is working on. And because of those reasons, I, I don't think they really reflect the spirit of what we were trying to do to proactively move forward. I hate to do that, you know, because, but, I mean, it's just, it's my opinion.
Yeah, anybody, if anybody else. Any other, any other comments?
Lee? Yeah, I just, whenever reviewing this, I've been making a lot around, like, I just basically want to underscore Jamie's point around policies and name. Like, I am personally guilty of that when it comes to, like, where I'm spending most of my attention, I very often put it on the back burner. But as I'm trying to lead in more around, like, what our purpose as a board is and what our obligations are, that is a huge one. And so I, I'm happy to see that in here, and I just wanted to second the point around making sure that we are really doing our job on number three.
Still back at, I don't think I can vote for this time, because I really would think. I'd like to know exactly, some points, and I know it's gone back and forth about that, but again, I don't think I agree, not that I agree, just any other way. And the other thing about, I sit in on a meeting with Jamie where they were going quickly over the policies, it was amazing. I was like, wow, I'm never going to miss another policy meeting again, because I know I have more time than you do right now, but it was just fascinating. Especially they're reviewing them, the attorney is going right now, so I'd like to. And Jamie lets us know, these are fascinating, amazing, you learn a lot.
No, that's great. Well, we have a motion, so all favor of the motions by saying aye, raise your hands. So, one, two, three, four, five, seven, okay? Anyone want to disagree? Maze, Barry.
Go, that's.
Jill, and we want to abstain and hateable thing, okay? So that passes. Those are adopted. Like I said, I said, if a new war comes on. Everything.
So just to clarify clarification on that, as a new board, then. We will recycle through the process as establishing our goals or?
Not necessarily, I mean, if the board, you know, has, has wants that in the topic. And puts that on the board chair, you know, puts it on and so forth, then you can, you can start all over again if you want, you know, so.
I think it takes new members a little time, you know, to absorb and jump again. That's right, yeah, that and the board goals now is your job, you're at this, not new board members that are coming up.
And I really do, I really do appreciate very comments, and I, I am really optimistic that the new board is going forward. Fantastic job, and they're going to just continue down this path, that's, that's, that's going to be really good. Even more measurable and more direct, and I think it's going to be, it's going to be have a very, very focused on the educational quality of this. And I really think that's true, the boards have a great job in kind of getting some solace in things taken care of. It's just so exciting to see that we're coming out with a whole bit of mass. And the presentations that we had today, oh man, wow, that's fantastic.
They were exciting.
Yeah.
They were exciting.
Yeah, and really, really good, so it's such, it's such an exciting time, I think we should, everybody should be really pumped and boozed about this. Okay, all right, so let's move on, superintendent goals.
Yeah, I made a, last one, I got a little bit of feedback, made an adjustment to one of the Florida items, and my goal. Kind of aligning myself more with the school-based action teams, I appreciate that feedback. But, you know, this is the core focus of our work this year, ties in with our four goals for the district. And we'll also tie in within the spring, really kind of wrapping up, you know, our, our. Um, and we'll also tie in within the spring, really kind of wrapping up, you know, our, our next steps for strategic planning. Uh, as we think about whether or not we want to create a one, a two, a three, find out five year, you know, long range plan, but a new. So I'm. That would be so.
Thanks, any, any comments or questions on this matter? All right, oh, go ahead, Kate.
That's everybody, yeah, that's parents, that's district, that's, that's everybody. Yeah, pending what the topic might be. Yep.
Okay, great, all right, to move on, uh, let's see, the next item up for discussion is the screen and stay initiative. Jeff, I know you've been anxious to talk about this.
Yeah, just say COVID was going away, I should have to say the same, but we're still kind of, uh, in, in the mix here. So this just came out at, uh, Friday at like five ten, uh, in the evening, which is great. Um, so we quickly reviewed this weekend, um, spent all morning this morning, uh, getting, uh, letters together because we had. Numerous students at the middle school that just started quarantining, um, playing the school. So, long story short, maybe you had a chance to read this, but this outlines the specifics more one page for five of the temporary document that came from. There are specifics as to when this is applicable and when it's not. So it's applicable for, you know, in class, uh, in school, it's not applicable for if there's a sleepover and a student becomes a primary contact. As an example, that doesn't apply to this, um, screen stay. Also doesn't apply to students being able to attend after school, before after school programs or sports or any of that nature. It's just specific to in school, um, and having the opportunity to stay and not have to quarantine as long as students don't. That's the key. So we're, we're working through a lot of the red tape, you know, curious this morning, um, trying to push out information to ensure our staff are aware. Uh, our administrators, I let know this past weekend, uh, and we sent out letters, uh, to the higher community, um, this afternoon. Letter and we. As well, there's an attestation. Have to sign as well. Submit that. Originally, we were last Tuesday on the D B H goal was, uh, parents submit that every day during quarantine process, that would be nice. We've got a hundred students that are potentially, you will be out quarantined. Um, we could not keep track, so luckily it's just one form signed submitted and that's it. Continue to screen on a daily basis. Um, and if there's signs of, of any symptoms, then the child needs to stay home, if the child comes in with symptoms, we would be sending the child home. And quarantine will take place and recommend testing as well. That's kind of it in a, in a nutshell, it was quite a bit, you know, in, in, involved in the process, but, um, I think we've got it running, it starts tomorrow. We didn't want to wait, um, you know, I mean, the governor put it out there, we talked to Legally, I talked to B J C Can today, our medical advisor. Um, and they both basically said, you know, like the run and, um, you know, we'll, uh, continue to collaborate. Any questions?
A few apologies if it's in here somewhere, so vaccination status doesn't matter for anything. Then, I, I maybe just read this, so the students can go to school, but they can't play in school athletics.
Correct, absolutely.
Quarantine from athletics.
That's right, yeah.
Or banned or, or whatever, extracurricular, any kind of outside activity.
Correct, and even so, when they're in school, technically for the documentation, they're, they're, we're supposed to be doing. For, um, call choir, so that has seen inquire, they're not giving speeches in front of the class, that sort of.
What about eating?
Are they allowed to eat?
Yeah, and that, that.
Honest to God.
So with, with eating per D B H, basically that's a function of kids still. Who, who are part.
Not a separate section.
No. Separate that kids now, get them to eat alone or, as a, no, so they can eat just as anybody else can in the cafeteria.
They just have to keep their mouth closed while chewing.
Well, that, it's the talking. Yeah, it, it's crazy and, and the other piece too. We identify as students, like this morning, we had kids that were identified as, uh, primary contacts. Now, are we gonna send them home and then tell their parents, but they can come back tomorrow, but we're sending them home today because that's their typical. No, we keep them in school, then the form come back the next day. Learning as well, so we just were working.
What if the mother parent doesn't sit, why don't we say the mother doesn't send the form back the next day with the child?
Yeah, it has to come back where we have to send the child home.
Yeah.
And they know that, okay.
One more, so I remember early on, we had, I can't remember if it was band instructor, somebody came in and talked about what they were doing. I think especially those like horns and things where you're blowing into them and they have things for. Is that, that's still, that's still in place, so a student who's. Close contact still can do banned, I guess, in school, not out of school.
Yes, still do ban, yep, in school, they just can't participate in any extracurricular. Yeah, so it's, it, there'll be something more that will pop up with this.
But they dropped this on Friday.
Friday, five oh eight, John's when I got that email.
And I'm gonna keep it real P G because I have a full-time job outside, right? Um, but like reaching out to the CAPS executive director, I mean, if you read their quote of how this is a creative and great way to move forward. But yet on every superintendent across the entire state, it came down on Friday until then on Monday, Tuesday.
But that's what the state does. I've worked for the state, it's for, okay, poor planning, tend to like.
All of our teachers, all of our administrators, and I think as, as superintendent, you should echo that, I mean, that's.
Incredibly frustrating for not to get this first before the governor's announcement. Because the governor makes the announcement, we got pummeled on Friday appearance because we just quarantine students.
Yeah.
And I'm just, we're sitting there saying, well, we can't do anything until we have. So, and then the guidance comes Friday.
It's just frustrating.
It's frustrating, yeah. I, I don't know, but, uh, I, every district is, you know, gonna offer this as an option.
Bottom line, it's better than sending the kid, the student home if he has no symptoms, because then we don't interrupt his learning. I mean, in the, in the big scheme of things, that's the best.
We still need to, you know, to monitor.
Well, you knew, you knew this was coming.
Well, guys, we had heard this, we, we had December that it was gonna be rolled out, um, and then all of a sudden the governor's. So, I'm surprised, okay. So it's, it's, it's up, it's running, um, our parent community is aware, um, all of our quarantine kits are aware, so those forms should be coming back. We're creating an electronic version of the form as well.
Yeah, I want to say, I mean, I just have to say the administrative team, so it came, we come together and they just come together, it tells, it was, you know, all hands on deck. I'm just amazed at how, you know, um, they just take it, they ask the relevant, important questions and then turn around and implement the abilities. It's just truly phenomenal, the, the team camaraderie in this district, so that's why.
But do they have a chance to express their frustration? I mean, do they, I'm just thinking what happens to me, you know, okay, because that's really.
I'm sure in the murmurs we're in between.
They have every right.
You know, we're just meeting at nine o'clock this morning to walk through this, so.
STEM and the.
Yeah, and the, the committee members or, or, and that committee members are here, we had a good meeting with them. Um, where we kind of walked through, um, some of the progression that they've made, they did a really good job. Steps that they've taken, some fundraising, uh, so Diane had, uh, shared. Some other, uh, information, um, space still, you know, is, is there. Present, having a, um, movable projector, uh, is, is really the way to go is, you know, uh. Not the word move, what am I looking for, what's the word? Portable. So, one, you want to share out, uh, some additional information, Diane?
I would love to.
All right.
Um, I know it's late for all of you and think about how late it is for us as educators. But anyway, so again, I just want to kind of recap as far as where we came from. And where we came from was back on May seventeen, I mean, it's on May nineteen, two thousand seventeen. When I first got wind of the fact that they were going to shutter the planetarium, which again wrapped me to my core. Because Mr. Bloom's memory and what he did for all of the students in Eastline wasn't just the high school, it was every elementary student that through there. So I showed up at Jeff's office with my yellow folder. One-page plan. Well, it didn't kill me. And my one-year plan turned into a very long plan, now it's twenty twenty one, so four years of giving birth to this child. Um, but it's been worth it every step of the way, and I think all of you have seen the fruit of the labor that our board of directors, our advisors. And our dedicated volunteers have put into this, not to mention the society and not just Eastline community. I'm talking nationally, I'm talking globally, people from Scotland, people from all over the world have reached out to me. And our organizations find out how they can support this initiative and how can they bring other planetarians back online, especially when we have, you know. We've got, you know, people going into space now and paying thousands of thousands of dollars, so reconnecting. And again, where we are right now, yes, we work with the projector, we had a great fundraising campaign back in July, it was a strike and match campaign. A very generous family whose daughter and son went through Eastline schools, the, the Dabber family. Um, offered ten thousand dollars for matching grants, and so again, our committee got together and said, all right, we can do this. And I'm thinking, all right, five, six thousand dollars, we got this, we'll match it. Well, within three weeks, we had raised nineteen thousand dollars and then they matched that grant with their ten. So twenty nine thousand dollars allowed us to put the check in the mail on August eighteenth or before. Didn't end there, so the fundraising efforts continue, the due diligence of all the volunteers that have showed up at farmers markets. Um, any place where we have donation jars, getting the name out there, learning the marketing, learning how to use, you know, Facebook and all of the different. Modalities as far as spreading our marketing and our name and getting that out there. From people who donated their time and talent and it's really skyrocketed, you know, no pun intended, but it truly has. And just recently, we ordered the, um, the computer and, um, also ordered the programming software. So that our, um, planetarium specialist who has worked for over sixteen years and planetarians around the country. Is going to start writing programs prior to the projector arriving, so this way we can actually get our first astronomy class. That is in a Victoria Thompson's class into the planetarium and have a class in there before the end of this school year.
Can I come?
At this point, the letter that I sent is again, instead of a year to your commitment that you'll hold the room, it's time to talk negotiations, contracts. And look further into what partnership you're going to enter into with Star System Incorporated. So we've done our due diligence, we have proved to you that we could raise the funds, we have given you a three-year budget, it's been a modified budget. Thankfully, because of, um, opportunities available to Star System Incorporated, we had the opportunity to scale that, the projector that we originally wanted to get. And we were able to order this one, and again, our fundraising efforts are not done, um, November twenty sixth, we have our. Philomenas has donated their venue and we will have, um, comedians that have donated their time and talent, so if you're not doing anything. But Friday after Thanksgiving, so seven o'clock doors open, so I got tickets, my card there. So again, it, it's just, it's not a one and done, we're committed to this and we're committed to not only as being an educational resource, but also. Um, providing, um, academic enrichment opportunities for students during the academic day and enrichment for this, um. Everybody, the general public in the evenings and on the weekends, and I would like to reiterate, reiterate that this is for New Lon, New London County. It's not exclusive to Eastline, but what a draw for Eastline, you talk about cheap, the student retention, keeping the contract with Salem going. And all of those different things, or any unique opportunity to be able to say, we have this initiative and it didn't cost the Board of Education any money. It didn't pass the town of Eastline any money, they paid for it once and now look at what we've done and how far we've come and where we're gonna go. And it's not the end of it, we're just the planetarium, we have other things that we're working on as far as our incorporation is concerned, other divisions and things that we'll be able to bring back. And to continue to provide opportunities, not just for Eastline students, but for students throughout New London County.
Lots of, lots of hard, lots of hard work and. Yeah, really keeping, keeping it rolling along, that's great. So, what by understanding and reading that is, you need, you need a, a more. Long-term commitment, contract, lots of detail worked out, um, so that you can kind of. Got to say, you know, that it becomes, it, it really is real, I mean, I, obviously it's real. Um, but, you know, you want to know exactly, so you, so as you fundraise and things like that, this is, this is definitely good.
Jeff, is there, um. We go back to the ad hoc committee, have a, you know, another meeting with Diane and company, um, and talk to a lot of logistics. You know, we don't know yet, like, you know, when, when do you plan to run, weekends, uh, you want birthday for student security, you know. There's a lot of logistics that I think need to be discussed and ironed out, uh, then that can be brought back to the, the table and, you know, if we. Want to do a formal, uh, agreement of sorts, then we, uh, we can do so, but we just need to work out those, that's my personal feeling, I mean, I don't know how. Those members of the ad hoc committee feel as well.
Well, if I could just interject, um, because I was hoping that's where we'd go, so we planned ahead of time, so we've got some reading for you as far as. Planetarium innovation and operation agreement, so we can look over that, it's totally draft one because we haven't come to an agreement. But it gives all of you an opportunity to see, and again, when I started this whole initiative, um, when I showed up with my yellow folder. And it was the Eastline High School proposal, proposal, planetarium initiative, I actually went back to what you guys did, Tim, back in the day with pool.
Oh, yeah.
And I used everything that you guys did for the pool and said, hey, we can do this for the planetarium.
Yep.
And we were very successful, so good job being successful first time. So we have that for you, we called from that document as far as what would work for us, but again, we'll show you exactly as far as what our intentions are. That'll give you an opportunity to read through it, and then when we have that ad hoc committee meeting, you know, we can further go through that. But like I said, in order for us to continue in good faith effort going through and getting grants and applying for those, we need more than just that local the room.
Yeah.
Or a year letter.
Yeah.
Eric, do that, see.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I don't know what, what's in that, but is there a, like a term sheet or a summary of what you need? And then, because I, I don't, I, maybe it's there, so I, maybe I need to read it, but if it's. It's a ten-page agreement or something that I'm happy to read, but typically there's some stuff before, which is write a term sheet. Agreement and then you write, then you write the details and all that stuff, so I, I just want to make sure there's something.
Well, the beauty of it, it's not ten pages, so I wouldn't do that to you, so again. If I'm gonna work very on social, martial learning. It is really just, um, probably three and a half pages, that's it. And so again, we did, I cut right to the four, you know. One-page sheet that I asked that you had received, it gives you the live link to be able to go onto our site to see whatever it is that you want.
I just say, I think the live link. It's stars to stem.org, right? So if it's not working for anybody, it's stars to stem.
Yeah, that's my dyslexia and taking that.
Excellent, okay.
Wait, there's one more fundraising, what is it, Kate, we worked on this weekend?
Oh, the, oh, Michael.
There's actually, there's probably like five other fundraising.
I mean, I drive by it every day on River Road and he's.
And, um, you know, again, there's been so many people that support this initiative, especially townwide businesses and, um. Actually, Michael, um, Goss is a resident in town, he lives at forty, um, River Road, and every year he does an extensive.
Oh, it's great.
Light show, and, you know, again, you, you take his engineering skill set from working at E V and he puts it into his yard. And, you know, again, you, you take his engineering skill set from working at EV and he puts it into his yard. So you can imagine that, you know, right up your alley, Bill, like as far as taking that exponentially, which is growing with it. And so, um, every year, he chooses a different organization to be, um, whoever he, whatever donations he receives either been a factory of that. And so this year, he decided to choose Star System Incorporated. And so our, um, volunteers, board of directors, we've sent the last two, um, Saturday and Sunday, helping to set that up. It goes live on November twenty-eighth, which is his son's birthday, and then it runs through till January first. So any of the monies that are raised will be donated to Star System Incorporated. So, and like I said, if you go to the real website, stars2stem.org, um, so the star, thanks, thank you for that, Annalise. It will provide you also with all of the updates that we've had, all of the news articles, all the different things that have been done. I mean, the PR is great right now, we're getting ready to do, um, a media blitz over the radio. And again, that was, they approached us and said, what can we do to help? Because this is really incredible. And there's, um, bigger businesses in, um, that are not just in town, that are within New London County that have reached out and said, you know, our corporation that is worldwide wants to take safety in this and how can we help? So.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah.
I guess that we have it in person.
Sure.
Yes.
I have like a shinkin' of the teacher, so you.
Person is good.
Thank you, Diane.
Thanks, yeah, thanks, thanks for.
Diane, thank you.
Sitting here for a long time, thanks for drafting that up. Ironic.
Thank you.
Thanks for not cutting up. We have two things, two things still to go.
Okay.
Okay, so for discussion, Jeff, on the baseball field, on the, uh, L B H's library and the pool roof.
Yeah, Mr. Long, uh, couldn't make it this evening, um, but pretty much everything he put is weekly update Friday, is where we're at. He probably saw him through by, I, the sand has been put down now, so it'll be mixing that in. Uh, the one piece we're checking with the current contract out there to give us kind of a, an estimate on the irrigation systems, the proposals that we receive back, I guess, were pretty high. Um, I don't have the exact numbers, but we said that they were high, uh, higher than anticipated, so we're waiting to hear back, uh, on that. Um, but the field is scheduled to be done by the end of November, uh, with, you know, you're going to be seated and then let it sit through the winter and the grass is growing in the early spring, so that's good news, it's cooperating. The, uh, library, L B H, you saw, is, is back, uh, online, um, and we're monitoring that. And, uh, you know, we are going to reach out to the building committee for, um, the, to fund the ceiling, that floor, taking up all the carpets this summer. And, and they're all square carpets, they can easily take it up, uh, seal the floor in there and then put the carpets back down. So I think that's a, and I already mentioned that, uh, to Rocky, uh, Ray O'Connor, and, uh, so we'll be bringing that to, uh, the, uh, the building committee, that's for you, so we still have about a hundred and seven thousand dollars in funds to the project that haven't been used yet, so. And then, uh, the pool roof, TechCon Architects is coming out to be at the phone meeting at our next meeting, I think it's twenty-second and twenty-third. And, uh, so at the phone, we'll be looking at, you know, that pool and the options that they can walk us through, because I know there's a lot, yeah, make sure, make sure you're coming to that bill. That's, yeah, twenty, yeah, twenty-second before Thanksgiving, so it'll be at four-thirty or five. Yeah, there it is, there it is, November twenty-second. So we're going to discuss their repair recommendation, anybody invited to come in, we'll probably take a walk over the pool to be here with the walkover, so. So that's, uh, just a quick update on those, uh, those items.
And the last item.
And then, Mr. Urban, you've waited out the whole meeting as well, um, thanks for. Cafeteria tables, so we were brainstorming, we, we need, I mentioned this in the past, we need, we've got eight out of the total, well, so how many do you have, eighteen tables, I think, in there? Cafeteria tables?
No, sixteen.
Sixteen, all right, so out of the sixteen, eight of them are really bad. Um, and, you know, we, we investigated it, you know, while the projects were going on a couple of years ago. In the end, we didn't do it, uh, we didn't replace any requests, so long story short, through food services, Chris investigated, we can utilize funds because it's directly related to cafeteria to replace these tables. And, you know, with bunches being, you know, free, um, Chris is generating quite a bit of revenue, which money we have to spend. Um, if we don't spend it, we potentially lose it at the end of the year, but it's, it's got specific parameters on its use, correct, Chris?
Yeah, so, yeah, you got to make sure you go through the state bid companies, you know, if they're available. And then it has to be directly for cafeteria use. That's what we decided, we actually contacted the state and said that was it acceptable with that.
Yeah, which is, which is a great way to use some of this funding to, to spend it down some, so.
Are these federal and state dollars or just state? Because I know we get both.
We actually don't get any. It's, uh, pretty good, the USDA funds are the funds, the state is the one who handles them out.
So federal to, to state, state to local.
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're all USDA fund. That's why we have followed their guideline for, for.
Sounds good, so these are twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty cents for eight tables, that's going to price them fourteen hundred dollars, a little over fourteen hundred dollars. But they definitely, somebody's going to get hurt, too, they're piecing back together and. So, uh, water replaced eight to start and, uh, that's the quote, um.
You said fourteen, that's why I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, fourteen hundred per, per unit.
Jeff, what would be the timelines to get those tables, just given lots of delays and.
Great question, I don't know, I'm not sure. We can, Mariana, if you know.
It could be on a barge somewhere.
They're on a barge.
They're in the sewers, can I ask?
Was Bay or whatever.
Okay.
For the motion, should, do we need to say from food service funds or something?
Yeah, that's what I was curious about, so.
Good idea, yeah.
Is that what it's from?
It's from, it's from the food services, uh, revenue.
All right, do you need to reference U S D A? Just for more clarification, okay.
All right, so Eric, you want to try it?
I'll do it, yeah.
Go for it, Eric.
Recommend approval by the Board of Education for the L B H cafeteria tables in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred forty, how about not to exceed? Not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars from the food service funds.
I'll second.
Okay, Cam, the second, uh, any further discussion on this?
I really like to put in parentheses USDA, because if someone's reading that, it doesn't specify, like, they'll go, I have never looked at though, I've never heard of this food service fund, it's just something that, that the Board of Ed has always had access to, maybe I'm being too. I just want to verify it's not coming from our funds, it's coming a different fund, school. But.
There's no need to put on USDA.
Okay, no, just me being, yeah, me just being cautious. Okay.
Okay, everybody all set? Okay, all those, maybe the motions, say why they're saying hi?
Hi.
Any opposed, anybody want to abstain? Passes, yeah, so that's it for the discussion action items for the evening. And now we have administration reports for the next hour.
You know, we, we do need the executive session if, yeah, so I, I'll, I was going to recap some of the things I put in the weekly update, you know, we're, we're still struggling, you know, with subs. I'm extremely concerned about, you know, our staff, um, and, you know, it's just, um, there's just a lot going on and, uh, people are stressed.
I believe it.
We're just trying to figure out, we used to believe you have this sub issue, make it outside the box. Um, we're, we've got, uh, some ideas as well as, uh, Chris Marge up with the Paris, so.
And you got the holiday thing that's coming.
Holiday stress is coming, which never helps. Um, so it's just, it's a challenge, it's a more challenging time than we ever anticipated.
Oh, no, no, the pandemic was.
Which is frustrating, but, uh, we just need to keep support, not put more on people's plates, um, and just trying to see if it works. You know, this year, so that was pretty much, and I'll keep you posted, winter sports guidance, we're still waiting for that, three weeks away. You know, we don't have any guidance yet for.
Oh, we'll get it.
The day starts, the day sports starts, we'll get the.
Yeah, so I'll keep you posted on that.
Annalise, anything, anything?
I think you saw some of the highlights of the work that's happening in my area, um, I'll just, one thing I had to add is that, you know, really shifting to looking at budget and preparing for the upcoming budget season and setting some priorities around that, so kind of, you know, that's been a, a new area of focus for me in my transition, so.
Okay.
You asked about standard error of the measure, I think I found it.
You found it? Let's connect after the meeting. I, I had, I, I was sharing with Barry, I, I could not find the standard, um, error. And so I was, after several emails and calls to college boards, and Barry found it there.
Go, Barry.
Yep. Our workshop is scheduled. Great. Okay, committee reports, I, I think we have the, the triple A, uh, committee reports.
You had triple A and everything was covered.
We'll, uh, we'll be good on that. Uh, board comments, the future agenda topics, do we have a comment?
Oh, well, I have a comment, uh, but basically Jamie covered it. Um, the last two triple A meetings have been rerun at the board meeting.
Yeah.
And I think it's doing a disservice to people to make them, the, the, present twice. And as it is, it's, they got to come on, they got to leave their family, they got to come to this meeting and then they have to present twice. And we have to sit here and listen to it for a second time, too, so I don't quite see the reason to do that. I mean, I, I thought they were both last time and this time were both great, I loved what I saw, but, you know. We don't, I don't go to the movie twice, you know.
What's always happened here is, is, you know, you have a district committee, you have three or four members here, now we're having seven board members come to triple A, some that aren't members, and that's fine. So we're only going to do it once and then that's it.
Yeah.
But, you know, but they'll have to just report after those members that, that don't attend, but, right, we can't do this twice.
I also just want to put a suggestion out, too, that, um, first and foremost, it is amazing to highlight our people because there were at times, many years ago, where no one was highlighted, right? And that's really, it works against if you want to work in unison and collaborative and all of these wonderful things. So, you know, having people, the, having the ability to come in and share their craft and all of the things that they do, um, that make these programs in our, in our district shine so much is super important. So whether or not it's at the triple A or if it's here, here you have more, I guess, coverage, right? Because there's so many of us and we get to actually participate and hear the information. So maybe a better balance, maybe, of, of presentation, maybe at the triple A or smaller or here. Um, but it, it's definitely worth doing, in fact, before you said anything, I was going to thank you for highlighting, you know, and taking the opportunity to bring people in to highlight the things that they're doing. Because a lot of people don't know, they don't know about the pathways, they don't know about coastal connections, they don't know about how these incredible, um, coaching opportunities are being implemented into our classrooms. And really, the benefit, sickly, like, everybody's getting the benefit from it. So I just, I found it, and yes, it was long, so I do understand and I can agree. But I just, um, think that it's a, a, a great factor that we're actually highlighting our people and bringing them in, so.
You and I can, can work at the side, Frank, what's a triple A topic versus what's a full board?
Yeah, I mean, so I think most of what we saw was a full board.
Yeah.
That was great, that we all got to see it, you know, and, and, I mean, I'm obviously on the committee, but I think that that would have been something hard to, to repeat with just, you know.
Agreed.
Reporting out on the triple A, you should see what's going on with the coach. I'm glad that it was here, but I just think we didn't need to do it twice.
I agree.
We'll definitely be shooting that, we just don't want individual board members to not get the same information that other board members are getting.
Right.
John, did you want?
Yeah, so in my soon-to-be-retirement from this.
You're funny.
I'm on the Daigle Foundation board and we have our Jingle, uh, Jingle Five K on December eleventh, so I'm expecting all of you to at least walk it. So, um, it's a great, great thing, we're brewing a beer at night at Public House as well, so it's, uh, all our school community events and this will be, I think this is number six. Uh, it's, it's an awesome event, so I encourage you to at least walk the five K.
Excellent.
Yeah, Cam.
So I'm getting a lot of feedback and I've seen it myself at some of the gates, some of the behavior that we're seeing. Um, and I kind of feel like it's maybe because everybody's been cooped up for so long and now we're having, because I was just seeing news the other day about some events, uh, we're not just at schools, but in different live events, we're having, um, different behavior that's, that's coming out. But specifically, some of the sporting events, so I, I think that maybe having a conversation, um, around that might be good, uh, and maybe how we create different supports for our security team and for our people and for the kids, um, and it kind of taken a little bit of some of the, the issues that have been coming forward. Um, possibly also looking at where cameras, I know we have cameras, clearly we don't talk about where the cameras are, but, um, there's some specific areas on school grounds that might benefit from having some.
I, I was actually going to mention that same topic and I was going to try to, because I, I didn't know what spin to put on it and, and of course, I turned to my wife for advice and she says, well, put the positive spin on it and make it presented as positive and, and so, um, and I just found out that, um, evidently, Vimal Lime is receiving award on a statewide, uh, athletic award for, for sportsmanship. And, and I said, well, that should be our goal, that should be our goal here, we should strive to get that award. I'm not saying we might not need a camera or something, but let's teach our kids, let's teach our, more than our kids, I think we need to teach our community how, how, we have wonderful sports teams, let's show them the, the appropriate way to support them. And let's work towards that goal of, of getting not only a, a, you know, a state championship, but do it with class.
I can't agree more, but there's two, and I know what you're talking about and I'm a hundred percent, but there's also another level of different things that, um, so there's on both sides for sure, so I think that maybe that conversation, and I don't know if it's something that you want to have at the triple A, what I would think athletics, maybe to have some conversation around that and how we can best support and yes.
Yeah, Deb, myself, Steve and Chris Olson all met today and we talked, the exact points, we talked through, we talked about logistics, there's still some games coming up, that, you know, the fall season that, you know, we're hosting. So logistically, we're talking about, you know, where the fan section is, uh, and where it could be moved and shifted to, because we've had some problems, you know, there, so they're working on that for Wednesday, so soccer game.
Good, I, I mean, if it, but if it's a goal amongst the community, it's a matter of, you know, the coaches are aware of it, the, everybody's aware that this is our goal, then this is, and this is how we achieve a goal like this, you know.
Adults and kids forgot how to act, uh, and we got to get back to that.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think COVID just hyped up so much energy that.
Yeah. You see it everywhere.
And just came out of the gate and took us by, took every discipline by surprise, I mean, it was because there's just been so many issues across towns, yeah, and school issues, but, hey, definitely. Good, Jamie?
So I have a couple, so I invite everyone, when you leave the meeting tonight, to go take a look at the glass wall over here at the high school, there are tons and tons of pictures of family members, vets, that the high school staff and students have put up. It, it's just amazing to look at. So I, I suggest that everybody maybe go take a view of it. Second, this weekend at the high school is puffs put on by the Eastline Theater Department. I can't say what it's about, except it's about a boy with a scar on his head who wears glasses, whoever wants. Because it's trademarked, I can't say. Cause it's trademarked, I can't say what it's about. So you get the gist. Um, and then, uh, cave is this weekend. I don't know who's going. Um, but delegate assembly is Thursday. Um, Friday is the actual cave. Um, I would like it if people would come visit me at the, um, Nutmeg Board. I've been asked to be a board member.
Oh, very good, Jamie.
I'm really kind of nervous. But come visit me. I'm excited. I don't know what role I'm gonna have, but I'm kind of excited, because I love reading about the Nutmeg Board. So come visit me on Friday.
So Thursday, the, the delegate, is it, who is going? You're going, I'm going, right?
Is anyone else going?
Okay, we're going to, I'm probably, just one day too. Okay, everybody all set? Oh, Barry.
The board comments, right?
Yeah, board comments, yeah, go right ahead.
Very quickly, first, um, I did it when I, when you were talking about all the positive things about, you know, the, the board next time. I wish that I could have the same optimism that you were purging to some horse trading rumors that are going on. New things that, uh, may allude to this couple of times about the faculty and the teachers being burned out.
Yeah.
That has come up so often. Um, every time it seems like we try to say, here's something new initiative that we could take on. It's like, well, we can't do that because the teachers are so burned out, you know. It is a, it means it's almost like we're in a state of paralysis because of that, you know, in terms of activities. And so I think that should be a topic that we should take on the board. And a lot of the paralysis that's happening out, and a lot of this overload is, the teachers are so besieged with so many things. So many. And it's almost like they have like a cognitive overload. They can't deal with it all. And it's part of our own making because of the initiatives we put on them. So there's some way that we could figure out how to consolidate, uh, the activities such that we ease up the load that's being placed upon the teachers, so that we can take. I, I think that's a number one priority we have to look at. How do we deal with this level of burnout and overload that the teachers are dealing? You know, I think we can do it, because I think part of it is in terms of, like, if we could take care of, look at, what are the initiatives that we placed upon them? And how can we consolidate those such that we relieve the pressure on, you know, and I think that's a top priority, top.
Very good, very, excellent, excellent, excellent.
Well, I think to that point, if I could just add, uh, I think our teachers probably know what they need by asking them that question, how we can support them.
I think that would be a dialogue, but I don't think I'm ready to put it, it's, we have to figure out some process about what are the contributing factors to that.
Okay, good, very good, yeah, very good, very good. Okay, all right. So we do have an executive session scheduled, so we'll take a brief recess. And, uh, so we can come back to executive session.